With a lot of kids, it there probably just be most of family.
Yeah, it will. But no, I mean, really, if you can sneak in and see it, just stand at the back, it's really.
We're all here, I'm gonna go ahead at six thirty and start the meeting. It's the June twenty fourth meeting of the Arts Commission is now in session. Mary Ann and Sarah are gonna be late and Tiffany's not gonna be present. Item two is we have received public comments. We actually have one person here to speak to us and we have one email. So I'm gonna go ahead and give the floor to Caleb and Aguirre for two minutes, Mr. Aguirre.
Okay.
Welcome to the Arts Commission.
Thank you, I appreciate being here, how you doing? So I have recently sent a email to Bonnie at the Dunkerville Outreach Ministry. And they just decided not to go forward with the actual mural. However, the location could actually be at another place. And I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Coos about seeing where could I put the mural at. I currently have it on my phone, but I'll describe it. It has a, the focus of it is Dunkerville is where champions rise. And then I'm also using, using roses as a, I guess a symbolic meaning with that rise and rose. Also, there also you see two hands, one is more darker complexion, one is more lighter complexion. So there's like a level of diversity. And inside those hands are the child that's rising, young boy who's smiling. And then at the bottom, we see waters split where you have children at the bottom, various colors to reflect that image. So I look forward to doing that. But also sending in for the application. And I'm just being a voice for those to, being a voice for those that may not know how to actually start using their voice, so I'm present here, that's essentially it.
Mr. Aguirre, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Not on the agenda, but Mr. Aguirre was one of our participating artists for Juneteenth as part of our, our roundtable. So just really quick round of applause for him, for the Arts Commission. Thank you, my friend.
And in the literary mind.
And the literary mind.
Absolutely.
Perfect. We also have a, an email I need to read for the record. It's dated June twenty third, twenty twenty five, it's from Mark Graham. It was sent to the City Council, City Manager, and me. The subject is arts and culture. Besides my passion for creating a true nature preserve in Dunkinville, seeing arts and culture blossom here has long been something I want to see. As far back as twenty eighteen, the Lad Project, as well as attempting to promote art here, it was taken on by a handful of like-minded residents. It was totally grassroots, any ideas were welcomed. It was mainly concentrated on downtown and main station, and frankly, sadly, it did ruffle some feathers. Shocking, I know. Sadly, probably too much happened too soon and getting downtown businesses to buy in was difficult. That said, a nature preserve did happen due to a lot of those that joined us in twenty eighteen for promotion of arts also stayed involved with the nature preserve efforts. The community needs to buy in and help make the arts happen. Bonding between artists and community is vital. So to show an example of that happening in a very positive way, let me share a novel idea, dripped on the road. This is an organization that bridges the gaps between artists and community. As artists and residents, they camp out, think Cedar Hill State Park, while learning the community, doing workshops, creating their individual takes on life in whatever area they are working on. And then he provided an Instagram link and a link to their documentary of their work on YouTube. My favorite is the River Otter mural, which hits home with a nature preserve. In any event, this is a unique way to bring art, the free thought of artists while transforming a city culturally. That is a win-win in my book, and it signed Mark Graham and he provides his telephone number.
And his presence is witness tonight.
I'll applaud him too. Everyone's welcome to the Arts Commission. Okay, is that it, Mr. Hamby?
That is.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to item three, the Arts Commission needs to consider minutes on two different dates. One is on five nineteen twenty five, it was Arts Commission and City Council joint meeting minutes. And on five twenty seven twenty five, the Arts Commission regular meeting minutes. Are there any comments, discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Browning made a motion.
A second.
Second, invite Angela, raise your hand, everyone in favor of the motion to accept. Unanimous. Okay, item four is commissioner reports. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start, mine is gonna be brisk. There's some important dates that we need to think about. Right now after today, we have basically two business meetings left. We have a special meeting on July eighth to, to, uh, July sixteenth, sorry, to review grant applications. Our regular meeting, which is scheduled on July twenty second, is actually gonna be the same night as a comprehensive planning joint session with City Council and the rest of the boards and commissions. So we have August and we have September to take action on things. I would recommend if there's anything that you're thinking about, any policies, anything that you want this commission, as it is now, to consider for recommendations to City Council, to, to be thinking about putting, dropping things in our inbox so we can review things. So August can be a hard work. We might also think about if you wanted to do a second special meeting to do business in July, we could consider that. July thirtieth, I'm having a meeting with Officer Arias and Curtis Ferguson to talk about arts and public safety. And this is a result of the Arts and Community Roundtable. He pitched a couple of ideas that seemed to resonate well with the community. And, and so while we're still here, I would like to move some of those discussions forward. And then, I am proud to say that arts funding at the state level made it through the veto timeline for the eighty ninth legislative session. It's official, there's seven point nine percent increase to the Texas Commission for the Arts. That's a five point nine million additional to the arts organization grants and two million additional to the cultural district project grants. So that's super good news. And that is my report. It's ready.
All right, Megan. Alright. This one is called A Thought and Light. Hewn and cut from wood or stone to shape what mine has dreamed about. Of shapes in life and rounded curves once thought about, now brought to light. Brush and stroke on canvas tight from layers left and some to mix of light and dark and shape and shade. Of what was thought is now in light. Note and beat in air's delight from drum and flute and string and horn. Sounds that shape in thought and heart for all who hear to bring delight.
Anything else, Vice Chair? Dr. Perry.
In Little Rock, I attended two art openings, which were wonderful, one at a major gallery and one with, it's kind of a auxiliary gallery that artists collaborated to show, and that was great. Juneteenth was fantastic, especially working with colleagues who were there and artists. And it was very inspiring, and the theater event was really wonderful. That'd be fun, and I wish I had been more involved for years afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. You catch your breath yet?
Yes.
Do you have a report?
Yes.
I will start with the Where are My Neighbors, it was an NEA grant. We went on Sunday to look at the paintings and the sculptures. Met the artists, it was really wonderful. However, it was an NEA grant, and I assumed that of course everything would be great, not so. So four of the paintings have been installed, the Dals, the four by eights have been installed. At the Dallas Housing Authority, the others four are in permanent storage. The others are for sale and three have already gone. To get them here would not really be possible, so I'm sorry about that, the plan was one thing. And then another, so. I have a poem as well, we had a song at the Sharing Sacred Spaces that culminated on Sunday as well. And this has been set to music. I did not set it, a friend did, and it's, it's absolutely. It's called Bless the Space Between Us. Bless the space between us that there may be hope within us. Bless the space, space between us, fill our hearts with peace. Bless the space between us that there may be love within us. Bless the space between us, fill our hearts with peace. Bless the space between us that it shall disappear. Let us see now and always the path to peace, to peace.
Nice. Since you still have two minutes left over, I went to this event, and I'll tell you what, it was so cool to see Mary Ann and her, and her, y'all, she's boss. I, I was watching her from the chapel, and she came in, they had the choir there, they had the, the lady who composed their, their song. She walks in, someone says something about her, and the choir did this, they gasped and applauded, I'm like, anyway, congratulations.
She was coming.
Congratulations, it was wonderful. They're on the end, Tim, Tim, Tim Perry.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
The theater did have its season reveal yesterday evening, and we announced our new season, there are brochures in the lobby that detail the entire season, I think the city allows us to do that, but I also have some with me, so as we lead. If anyone didn't get a brochure last night, you would like one, I'm sure you'll wanna make plans to attend everything. The other thing that's important, and the Arts Commission did help a little bit. This Friday night at seven thirty and Saturday at two o'clock, the kids' class and teen scene at the theater that hosts the workshop every summer, we were performing Willy Wonka, Disney's Willy Wonka. And we had leftover chips and waters and things from Juneteenth, and just as we did last year, those were donated to the kids who consume a lot of snacks. But if you would like to come see their performance, Tim is correct, it'll be wall-to-wall parents and family and everything. But we do have a video camera feed to the lobby and there'll be a place to watch it. Those kiddos do amazing work, and Kevin and Samantha do a great job teaching them, so we invite you all to come.
Nice, thank you. Hardest-working lady in the Arts Commission.
Let's see, worked Bloom Fest, that was wonderful, had a fun time with the city, Anne was out there, Mac, Tim, Amy was out there, yeah, everybody was out there, it was hot.
I wasn't out there.
But it was fun, so we did Bloom Fest and then we all did Juneteenth. There was something else I was gonna mention, I can't, I can't think of it right now, I'll talk more about Juneteenth.
Thanks Angela. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item five, the arts calendar. You're up, Dr. Perry.
Well, Amy announced about Willy Wonka, which is on the calendar, and the only other thing I'm aware of, aside from our special meeting on the twenty second, so that's in lieu of our regular meeting, right?
Well, our, the twenty second is the date of our regular meeting.
I know.
But it's being, it's being conscripted by that.
Okay.
So we have, we have another special meeting on the sixteenth to go over grant requests, or applications. And then we might do this through email, if you wanna discuss having a second special meeting this month, if there's any business that we need to attend to.
What time is the meeting on, the sixteenth?
The six thirty, oh, sixteen, is it six thirty?
Six.
It's, it's gonna be here.
I've got six.
Six.
Six o'clock at the Dunkerville Field House.
Okay. Field House, not here.
The only other thing is that Mary Ann started a writers group, which is ongoing at the library. It's the first Monday of each month, and she was in Germany last time, so I led the group. And I suppose you'll be back for, I mean, it's ongoing, so it's really interesting.
Hold it, hold it.
It's a lovely meeting, and so the library is evolving as well, lots of programs.
It is.
You know, we did, we did Juneteenth as well as, I mean, Bloom Fest, we did the children's program, the summer reading group. So that was a big, it's a successful arts, you know, we should note that somewhere.
You know, it, it may be kind of late in the game for this, but you know, the, I mentioned this, the new calendar that the city uses is amazing, it's robust. You can go on there, set up an account, or you can work with Alex, because these things are on the calendar, you can put them on the city calendar, and anyone can go and look at it. And it's super helpful.
And if anyone, I can pass this around if anyone wants to add anything to it.
Anything else? Anything else on the arts calendar, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item six, we have a special guest, ladies and gentlemen, the steering committee discussion with the one and the only city manager, the great city of Dunkinville, Texas. This is Doc.
Makes people wanna come, makes people wanna come to Arts. You guys have poetry and applause.
Yeah, I wanna plug it, you mentioned July twenty second, and I don't wanna steal, because Councilmember Gooden's here and she's on the steering committee. We actually have the draft of the new twenty forty comprehensive plan, alright? And that's actually what we're gonna be talking about on July twenty second. And you guys, I'm so excited, there are so many components in the implementation matrix of this that relate to art. I, I'm not gonna read it all, but just kinda give you some highlights. Land use action, section five, zoning updates to consider designation of the cultural district and include opportunities for design elements relative to that. Action item eight, develop an arts and culture programming operations plan to activate the arts and cultural district. Number eleven, develop a public art program to create and install public art throughout the city. Thirteen, complete arts and cultural district master plan to create a unified vision strategic policy. Seventeen, work with local partners to activate public spaces and creating inviting downtown atmosphere, and it goes on and on and on. This document is specifically to guide us for the next fifteen years through the year twenty forty. So, I mean, it's, it's more than just talking about it, because now it actually becomes solidified. This is still in draft format, but once we get to the point where council adopts the comprehensive plan, it's part of the strategic items that we're going to be focused on, we're going to be budgeting to, we're going to be implementing. So really excited, there's a lot of detail about that. If I can just, Councilmember, you wanna add anything, you're on the steering committee.
No, you've covered it all. We're excited about it.
There's a lot of excitement.
I, I would encourage, if you haven't read the draft, any of the documents, particularly this draft, it's chock full of arts. If you pull up in a PDF, do a word find for art, it's, it's, it's all woven in there, it's exciting.
So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit tonight about steering committee, the cultural district, and just kind of, let me start with high level, kinda how this came to be. So what happened was, we were in a council meeting, and actually, I'm glad she's sitting here, Councilmember Gooden volunteered me in a council meeting to meet with Chairman and, and talk about what are the next steps for the steering committee, right? So the council by resolution established at your recommendation, and thank you for all of your hard work. I wanna make sure that we really thank you for everything that you guys have been doing, but you guys gave birth to the local cultural district essentially, right? And that was the resolution that council passed, I wanna say in February. It also, the second part of that resolution created a steering committee. The steering committee is kind of the next step in where the cultural, the local cultural district goes from there. So what the, let me go back for a quick second there, Alex. So what the, what the council actually asked us to do was for me to get together with Ron and talk about the steering committee, and maybe how that would go about, what would be the next steps of that. And really, one of the things, and you feel free to jump in here and do this with me, but one of the things that struck me from that conversation is there's a lot of things happening in the city right now, there's the comprehensive plan, a lot of exciting things, right? We've got you guys, the Arts Commission working on stuff, economic developments working on some stuff. We've got some movement for hot funds and all those types of things. But, and Ron actually said it to me, this was the first time in that conversation where we talked about strategy and what are the next steps and where it comes. And so, really my takeaway from that discussion with him was, we need to kinda lay out like a blueprint of what it would look like to move it forward. And so, really, and this graphic kinda demonstrates, and I, I will talk about this a little bit more, but kind of each of it, every role associated with the Armstrong Park Cultural District, right? Obviously, the residents of City Council are leading us, the Arts Commission, you guys are a huge part of that. The steering committee would be the next step in terms of moving the cultural district forward. We have our economic engine being the DCEDC. We have the City Council using hot funds to help advance initiatives. And then really, there, we talked about this, a little opportunity for a new not-for-profit partner, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second, if you could, Alex. So, really, and this is very much a draft document, I haven't even presented this to council yet, council's got so many big items on their agenda right now. It's gonna take a minute to get it to council. But really, the, the concept here is to break out, moving the ball forward for the cultural district and what future boundaries would be of the cultural district into a phasing plan. And basically, some key core values or pillars associated with the cultural district. And, and I believe what I really tried to do is capture the thoughts that you guys have shared over this past year and a half, two years, that you've been working on the cultural district, as well as what I've heard from council. And really focusing on the four core values being equity, economic impact, preservation, celebration, and then collaboration. And then when you really get into it, breaking it apart into the four different phases, if you could just advance for me, Alex, I think is the next. So I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. Really, we kinda create just a graphic representation, a symbolic representation of, of kind of each other's roles relative to the cultural district and kind of going forward. So obviously, like we just talked about, residents and City Council, the Arts Commission is a huge part of this overall. And, and I under, what is my current understanding, you guys please correct me if I'm wrong, that as you go into this next phase of the Arts Commission, you're really gonna be focused on programming, financial support, grant reviews, all of those types of things. Trying to attract artists to the community and really trying to support events and, and you know, murals, statues, the, some of the stuff you guys were talking about tonight, all of that kinda stuff. The steering committee would really be focused on the cultural district itself. And specifically, I believe, from everything that I've researched, the next phase for the cultural district would really be to focus on planning and zoning. And I think that that's really the next key segment for the steering committee. And then we talk again about the, the hot funds of ECEDC and potential new not-for-profit partner. So the phase, and so I think this is in your packet and you can kinda follow along here, page two really talks about the four phases. So you guys have done the hard work, you guys gave birth to the local cultural district, you guys got us started, right? So that's what happened with this first phase, the cultural district now exists surrounding the borders of Armstrong Park. This next phase, we were based on this blueprint, would be to focus on the planning and zoning aspects very much in fast forward for a second. By the time we get to phase four, when we would talk about a future potential application to the Texas Commission on the Arts, there's all kinds of requirements associated with that, and I think that's on page thirteen of your document, you can see all of those different requirements. But, right, one of the things that we know, I think from the conversation that we've all had, is we wanna attract artists to the community, right? We want to be welcoming, we want to have artists live here, maybe have an art studio here. We want to welcome art museums and art studios and all of these types of things. And I'm gonna be honest with you, we have some work to do, because right now, our zoning, our code makes it difficult for that. We recently, I think some of you know, had a art museum that wanted to come to the city. But the current code makes it a little cumbersome, they have to go through and get some special use permits and some other steps. So that's why I talk about planning and zoning changes to really support what it is that we're trying to build here and develop here. And so a lot of that work really would be done with this next phase, and what that looks like to attract and bring those. And that could potentially include zoning changes. With this new comprehensive plan, one of the things it talks about is a downtown district. And interestingly enough, in the zoning map of that document, and you'll see it in there, it expands from basically, I wanna say Center Street, down to Wheatland, across Wheatland, almost over to Wheatland Plaza. I think is what's called the downtown district. I kinda remember that same type of thing from a really early conversation with you guys, honestly. Right? But we can do it through zoning, we can do it through the zoning changes, we can say, okay, in this area, we really, whether it's an overlay or a zoning change, we really envision a robust artistic cultural district downtown in this whole area. And then what are those elements that we wanna allow there? Do we want to allow art studios and museums in that area as of, as of right use, for instance, instead of having to go get special use permits? Do we wanna allow two-story or three-story buildings that maybe is a flex space building that has an artist studio on the first floor and that maybe has a loft where they live on the second floor, those types of things? All of those conversations still need to be talked about and discussed. The comp plan lays the foundation for those, but then it's time to get into the nitty-gritty and really start to figure that out. That's really what I think the phase two, the next step for the steering would be of, of moving the cultural district forward. That would really end up, by the time we get to an application later on down the road, it could really start to lay out what the full boundaries of the cultural district would be at that point. Because right now, we have, and I keep calling it a local cultural district, but that's essentially what it is, right? We don't have the TCA designation. It would be, we have the local cultural district, we can start with what we have, we can then grow from there. But then we can start looking at these other changes that are very much in keeping with the application requirements and everything else as you get to phase four. Phase three really kind of digs into full-blown implementations, so think about phase two, where we say, okay, those flex space buildings that we talk about, that includes an artist studio, that includes a loft, we want those. We want art studios, we want art museums, so we go through and change the code, right? Well, then we have to go out and implement it, after the code's changed, that's one thing, but then we gotta go attract it, then we gotta bring it in. So that's phase three, is actually putting those strategies and those codes into action. So think about this, probably realistically, you're probably talking two years, maybe three years down the road at this point, by the time we get through phase two and phase three. At this point, you have a pretty good Sunday. If you like a hot fudge sundae, you've got the hot fudge, you've got the ice cream that's working, we're rocking and rolling, there's events happening, there's pretty cool things happening. The cherry on top right is the TCA designation at that point. And that really comes in phase four. That's why it's designed like this, to lay out a little bit. Where the sundae's still good without the cherry, right? It's still working, things are still happening, and that's all good. But the cherry just adds that little bit more to the sundae. And that's what comes in phase four. And then, so at that point in phase four, that's where we really have to determine the CDME, right? The cultural district management entity, we have to figure out exactly who's making the application, is it City Council, is it the Arts Commission? Is it the DCEDC, is it whoever, right? We've gotta figure all that, go right ahead.
Insert just real fast, and this, the reason I'm interrupting him is because I had a conversation with Tim several, several months ago when we had coffee. And when we, when we discussed the resolution and had the steering committee, I don't think I made it clear that the steering committee is a copy and paste of the cultural district management entity from the TCA. If you've gone back and looked at the presentation that, that I presented in October, you'll see that it's the exact same thing. So while all this is happening, the infrastructure for a CDME, a cultural district management entity, will be in place. That was something, I didn't realize that wasn't clear until Tim and I had that conversation, so I wanted to get in front of the steering committee and the CDME, structurally are the same thing, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. And then we'll figure out exactly if that's the entity, right, that actually ends up making the application. That's, can start, still be figured out by council down the road at that point. Page thirteen, I mentioned it again, this is really phase four, is really all about the application to the Texas Commission on the Arts. You can see all the requirements there, you can see the strategic rationale. But if you flip through the pages before this, and we're not asking you to do anything tonight, this is just to introduce you to it and then give you some reading material and just start some conversations. The pages before, you really start to see how there's a lot of them like that, with the comprehensive plan, Dunkinville twenty forty, and all these different things. The cultural district also asks, or calls for, creating some additional subcommittees. There's a typo on here, it's actually, it would be the Steering Committee, the Organization and Events Committee. But a couple of different Marketing Committee, Design Committee, Business Development Committee. Some different segments as that really kind of gets up and going. Again, I talked about these, just highlighted here for you in this presentation, there's There's so much alignment with the goals of the comprehensive plan, of the draft comprehensive plan twenty forty. That's why it's so important, we need you there on July twenty-second. And when you go, and please do me a favor, look at the mural on the right-hand side as you go in the door of the Field House. There is so much opportunity to redo that mural, to look at the other spaces inside the Field House. We had record attendance this past weekend at the Field House. There's so, there's so many great things happening at the Field House. The city council's authorized, we just did a one-point-five-million-dollar investment in the Field House, new HVAC, all kinds of different exciting things. There's so much opportunity, again, for this stuff to all come together. Some of the other goals, go ahead, Alex. In terms of the downtown vitality, so much of this is in alignment with all of the things that you guys have talked about, from a public art perspective. Some of the action items, and, and we'll make sure that you get a link to this and get a copy of this, go ahead. But I also want to encourage you to be creative. Have fun, right? We have so much canvas in this city, especially around our area, from Main Street up to Center Street, potentially over the plaza, all that to be figured out, right? Where we can have some fun and we can make it unique, right? Why not have a giant mural at the main intersection of Main Street and Wheatland that talks about, welcome to Duncanville, city of champions, or even, welcome to Armstrong Park and the cultural district, right? There's so many fun things that we can do with our crosswalks and our murals. We can, we can talk about some of that kind of stuff. I did go back for a quick second here. One of the things, when I talk about code updates and all the work that the steering committee really needs to do, in my opinion, in this next phase, relative to code and zoning, there's a whole section of our code, sixteen-eight dash thirty-nine on the murals. I can promise you, it needs some love. It needs to be updated to do, I think, what you guys want to do. And so working through some of those, seeing what other cities do, making recommendations to council, bringing it back to you guys for feedback and everything. Those are some of the things that I think that really need to take place in this next step. And then the last photo is kind of a teaser for Bart, but we'll let Bart talk about that. But, again, have some fun, so. What questions? I know it's all brand-new to you, any initial thoughts, questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
So first of all, thank you for coming, we know you're busy. We've talked about it on a couple of different meetings, but really haven't talked to a great degree, the value of creating a cultural plan. How does, if the Arts, if a future Arts Commission decided to invest any energy and resources to a cultural plan, how does that fit into these different things?
Absolutely, great question, so a couple of different things. So, number one, this is really just kind of a blueprint for moving lawfully, right? This isn't that full plan. Number two, I'm just trying to figure, find it here real quick. Yeah, goal number thirteen, so the city council, when they adopt this, they're gonna require us to come up with a arts and cultural district master plan, to be create, to create a unified vision and strategic policy and project. And the primary stakeholders involved with that is city council, staff, and the Arts Commission. And it's got its own, like, bucket of where it's gonna be. So, the master plan should create a unified vision for the district and outline policies, potential projects, and implementation needs, schedules, to advance arts and culture in Duncanville. So, we'll be required to do it. So, this is just kind of like a starter, here's the next steps. That's why I say it's more like a blueprint than an actual plan. It's more like, okay, do this, then do work on this, this type of thing, just kind of a roadmap. But then the plan would actually be the detailed document that would actually talk about everything.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Downtown, you said just to Center Street. Why would you not push it a little further to include the feed store and the Franklin? As part of your downtown or all of it?
It absolutely could. So there's a couple of other things that are going on right now, right? So we have a brand-new, really excited art if board, has their very first meeting tomorrow night. That's the Tax Increment Finance Board. And so that includes currently Camp Wisdom and redevelopment opportunities, Camp Wisdom. I know they've even talked about potentially doing a new sub-master plan to come south on Main Street a little bit, and maybe come down as far as something like the Ben Franklin, those types of things. All that's very much in flux. This, that was just the, the recommendation or the suggestion. All those specific boundaries would have to be figured out, because we'd also have to look at available land, right? When it comes to land use, planning, and zoning, we'd have to look at, if we want to welcome flex space, for instance, and welcome like a combination art studio with a loft, where's the land available to do it? And so we'd have to look at those particulars, if you think of that.
You know, we, I don't have the language that he has, but recall when we were talking about, because I think we first started talking about this fifteen months ago. And I kept using the word cultural corridor. So we have to have a strategy for the way that we enter into a commercial enterprise, because the park is public. And, and I kept using the word cultural corridor, because that implies we're gonna build that strategy as it comes together. He has better language than I do, but we've talked about, we've talked about some of this strategy, just not as well.
The steering committee, has that been? Do we know who's gonna be on it and any of that?
This is really, really early, so the, the resolution calls for the steering committee, and I believe the resolution calls for council to appoint the chair. And the rest of it, I think, is very much still wide open, so. But there needs to be, you know, when you think about, for instance, that phase two, if we're gonna focus on code and planning, I'd like, I would recommend our planner, probably our assistant city manager community, who's a certified planner, to provide some guidance and feedback on that. There needs to be maybe representatives from the Arts Commission, there needs to be some artists, there needs to be a cross-section of people to help with that.
Tonight, later on in the agenda, we're actually gonna go over the resolution as a reminder, what's in it. And, so keep this in the back of your head and look at it with fresh eyes.
I had a quick question, it may be really more related to, I guess, item fifteen or whatever, but I know you kept saying the boundaries, and I know it's called Armstrong Park, called the district, but then we did that walking tour, is there any discussion? And I'm, I'm not waving one way or the other, it's, it's a query. You know, we talked about the, the fire suppression quarters and some of those things, that, that would be, be looking at potentially expanding that a little bit, so that we can accommodate, so that we meet the guidelines, is that?
Yes, that's exactly what we're talking about. So essentially, what we would do in phase two is really figure out those areas that makes the most sense. We would figure out the code updates that need to happen. Then phase three, probably actually update the zoning, maybe it's an overlay, maybe it's a zoning district. And then probably, somewhere late phase three into phase four, we would say, okay, the Armstrong Park cultural district is now going to be.
Right, okay, that's, that's what I was. Because I know there was, when we did that walking tour, we all recognized some, some cool ideas and some, some opportunity.
Right. And remember, the first paragraph of, of the resolution is that the boundaries can grow. It's actually in the resolution that we voted on.
A good question. But yes, that's aiming to, to be honest with you, this whole thing would be setting it up so that we could grow it. This blueprint would be designed to grow it, and then incorporate all of those elements, like that are listed on page thirteen of the blueprint, that really are all the TCA guideline items. Yes, ma'am?
What are railroad flats? What are they?
So, it's a piece of property that the city currently owns, okay? That we potentially have some interest in some mixed-use development, being constructed on that property. And hopefully, there's something that we can include relative to the historic portion of the city relative to the railroad, right? And so, that's why even in that silly little graphic, right, and it's just, just conversational type things, right? But there's like the railroad, the old steam locomotive type thing and everything, just to honor all of those different aspects of the city.
Does this mean we get a, we get a locomotive?
Free trolleys?
You know, you know.
A dart station?
A bit, we don't wanna give away that much.
Sorry.
But what a lot of communities, especially with historic railroad paths I've seen do, is they'll put up, as silly as it sounds, put up like an old steam locomotive that actually is a bicycle rack, right? To kind of honor that type of different stuff, especially in a downtown border like that, so.
And you know, this is a great opportunity to have an Arts Commission, because we can put, we can put out calls to artists to come up with these ideas. We've talked about millions of times in front of city council, if you wanna know what the community looks like, let artists go at it. So, all this is gonna be a wonderful opportunity for the future Arts Commission to, to bring new artists in, current artists, to figure out what this looks like, so it's not committee-driven necessarily.
Yes, ma'am?
There's a nonprofit entity mentioned, could you talk about that a little bit more? It would seem to be important, because it takes time to process that.
It does. So, and, and that's actually referenced a little bit in the document. As, as a result of the conversation I have with Ron, and then additional research that I've done, as well as what I heard from different council members on some of the research that they did. Council member Kooz, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but feel free to jump in here if you want to. You know, one of the big things with a successful TCA application is also a private-public partnership. So, we do have one, being the DCEDC is a not-for-profit entity. But I think the other opportunity here is another completely independent not-for-profit, really earmarked to raise money for arts and cultural program in the city of Duncanville. And the document talks a little bit about some of the details of that to be figured out later. Maybe there's a memorandum of understanding, maybe in exchange, they get to use the senior center, I'm just gonna make something up, three times a year to hold an event, in exchange for the money that they're raising to bring programming to the city of Duncanville. All that to be figured out. But really what it would be is, it would be a standalone entity that would not receive money from the city. It would actually be in reverse, where that entity would actually be raising money to support arts programming for the city, to bring more.
So how do you get to that, since it's private, how do you get them?
Well, I think we have a pretty good lead on somebody who might be interested in doing that once they're off the Arts Commission, and so we can.
That could be only agenda for a future.
Would that be similar to like the Friends of the Library, or the Friends of Tri-City?
Exactly.
That kind of thing, where there's an entity that raises money, because as a public, as a city organization, it can't. So, I think it would be somewhat of that.
I think it's very similar, maybe expanded, yes.
That takes something.
And you can recall the very, very first joint meeting we had with city council, the very first time we talked about this, which was almost a year ago. We talked about, this is when I asked for a million dollars, remember that meeting?
Yeah, I remember it.
No, I just lost my turn to talk. We, it's always been a conversation, there needs to be a third leg in this tripod, and that would be the nonprofit component to it.
All great questions.
While we have him here, he's the guy to ask questions for. It's hard to get him.
Who's designing these possible graphics?
Tim.
No.
A lot of these were done through AI. Just to kind of come up with basic things, it was some stuff I was playing around with and working with, and some different software programs I have access to, and, and just to come up with some different things, just to make it look nice, as we're looking at reports.
Am I allowed to talk? I don't think so. I'm sorry. Any other thing? Any other questions for Mr. Finch?
So the comprehensive plan, where it says twenty forty, is that the year twenty forty? So the plan, you hope that by twenty forty, you will accomplish everything on this plan?
So, it, it's, it's basically, it's a fifteen-year plan to coincide with our fifteen-year capital improvement plan. And it kind of lays out the chart for the course. So the way I usually describe it is, when you wake up, it's January first, twenty forty, and you drive up Main Street, and you're driving downtown Duncanville, look around, what do you see? Tell us what you see, because that's what we'll focus on building, right? We've gotta have the vision, and we've gotta know what it is everybody envisions, and then move forward. So it's really, that plan is designed for to guide us over the next fifteen years to what Duncanville twenty forty would look like.
So one thing this, this body has always talked about is, is a space, multi-use space for the artists. And there's always been a question, how do we get there? I use analogy, who cleans the toilets? Because I will tell you, she cleaned the toilets, that's the idea. So I will ask you, who's gonna clean the toilets? And if nobody raises her hands, I tell you, there's not a plan for it. So, this is the plan to get to every kind of space this commission and future commission can think about. And I think that's gonna be the credibility of an Arts Commission, because remember, everything that we fund, there needs to be some metric tracking, it's in the policy, and community engagement board wants to help. So what you do with those metrics is it all goes into what that space can look like and how can be made.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for everything you're doing for the arts in the city of Duncanville. We truly appreciate it, we need you guys. And really, just thank you for all the time and energy and everything that you put into this, it is very much appreciated.
Well, we appreciate you taking the job to be here.
Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you.
No, item seven, next up, I'm gonna do this, the one, the only Bart Stevenson, the director of Parks and Rec is here. This is the time for the Armstrong Parks sign.
I guess.
Are we done?
Everybody really likes it, right? So I don't know, that's why I heard that. So, well, thanks for having me tonight. You know, I think the last time I was at your meeting, was actually the evening you guys kind of put in motion or recommended to the city council about the cultural arts district for Armstrong Park. And, you know, and I said to ask me my thoughts that evening, and I remember stating that I am a one-hundred percent supporter of arts in the parks. And so, this is, I guess, an opportunity, I guess, for me to put, you know, put my, my words into action. And so, about a month ago, I received this graphic from our city manager, and said, hey, Bart, and I mess with, hey, Bart, you see any thought about doing something like this for Armstrong Park? And I was like, well, no, it looks awesome. And I think, I'm definitely interested, you know, and so, actually, you know, we started, I, I guess, actually made a decent amount of work, was talking to some sign companies, we got some ideas, and this is ballpark figures, and what it would cost, and, so kind of, I guess, I got a plan in place as to how we could move forward with something like this, it's not, maybe, maybe not be the exact what it looks like when it's done. Creating some kind of, what I would call a social media opportunity for our crown jewel of Armstrong Park. It's our cultural district, and it's our, it is truly our, our shining star for our park system. And we get lots of visitors, not just from Duncanville, not just from the best southwest, but from all over Dallas, all over the metroplex who come to this park for various reasons. And our data shows that from all of our events, when we do our place our AI analytics. So, we know that. And so, with that, I'm not here asking for money, because that's the good news for you. You know, you can use your money for other projects, but we, I think the thought is, we would use hot funds for this project. But we do want to bring it before you, because you are the Arts Commission, and we have created all the cultural arts, we wanna get your thoughts, feedback, hopefully perhaps your support for moving this idea forward to the city council. We're also gonna take this to the park board at their next meeting, to get their thoughts and ideas and support as well. So with that, I'll open them, any questions you have? Just as a perspective, this eye is, for this specific graphic, is about four foot tall. Just like gives you kind of an idea how big this is. And you see these all over, I think Cedar Hill has one, Blue Black Park, I think that's where they went out front. I just came back from Kansas City, I saw two, very similar, you know, I love KC. I was taking pictures of them, but I was driving, so I couldn't do that. But you see these quite a few, but New York City has quite a few. But you see them in Instagram, Snapchat, Facebook, people go take pictures. And it helps sell your community on the beautification and the car, the arts, and the opportunities of showing really what Duncanville's all about. And, because it's such a beloved park, it really only makes sense that we start here. Not saying it'll be the only park, the only sign we'll ever do, but it makes a great target. And someone asked me earlier, you know, wherever we put it, and I probably could have picked a better space than this. My wife, my wife taught me this, is that you always wanna know what's in the background for pictures? So having the amphitheater and kids' bill in the background is what you want. So, if you could get those in the background or wherever the sign would be placed, that would be ideal, because everyone would see those beautiful, beautiful amenities that we have here in the park, in the background to those pictures, so. With that, open any questions you might have?
It's very festive. The color palette is real different from this color palette of this graphic, and I'm just wondering if it signalizes the, kind of the branding color sensibility of the entire district or just the sign? I, I think it does resonate probably with the, the water part now, is that right? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we got that deep in thought as how we chose the colors, or how Mr. Fish chose the colors, and then he probably wants some bright vibrant colors, I'm guessing.
Well, that's, that's exactly right. The bright, bright vibrant colors and everything.
Yes, because it signifies, like, that the spirit of the park is a very vibrant park, very active. To me, those colors make sense. Again, I don't know if the artists that you guys are here at the table, but they're limited about amount that is within me and kind of just kind of bring it out.
I saw Mary Ann. No?
Yes.
Does any of your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, to that point, I wonder about coordinating with the mosaic that's being planned for that, those colors. But my question is just ballpark, what were the figures? Not my money, but.
Yeah, you know, once the signage, the base, the lighting, the power that requires, the electricity. They were from 25,000 to 30,000 total. Could be a little less.
Sorry.
So, would the words be lit up or there'll be lights? Oh, okay, so they'll be lit up. I've also noticed like when I've seen like signs like that, like, or I think what you were talking about, Globe Life Park, where it says Texas and the people spell the X. So, maybe like we spell the I, you know? If it was space for that, like instead of having the I, let somebody stand there and have like the prints. Yeah, so it is I love Armstrong Park. I don't know, just stop it.
Is it weird that you say that? Because the first time I saw that heart, I thought of Dr. Perry staying in the middle of it. Can you see her? Can you see her doing that?
Tim. Well, this really brings up, you know, the question for the future of the Arts Commission in the kind of the overall design of the district. What are the art sensibilities going to be in that district? Currently, Armstrong Park is beginning to, you know, with HEB doing the signage around the Kidsville and this kind of signage and any other things, you know, you have the equipment now going on. It feels like the aesthetics of the park are shifting by nature of what these little installations are that are being added to that, to the park. And I think in the future, is there, is there a real design sensibility going to be for, for the district, you know, in terms of architecture that might be added into the area in terms of signage, you know, along the Main Street? Or there's all these things that seem to be up for consideration in the future. And do we want to have an awful lot of things that, well, we do right now. I mean, we want to add excitement to the park and all that. But I think we need to also be cognizant of, are we going to continue to brand or let sponsors come in and do stuff, which is nice? But it's also a cacophony of visual looks start to take over. And the space, it looks very commercial at some point instead of, you know, whatever we want it to be, whatever the city would like it to reflect. So, that just brings up this idea. That's all.
Spoke like a creative director. Thank you, absolutely. Did you wish for a hand up? Any other questions? Bart, will you come back and hang out with us?
Always.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. Round of applause. Number eight, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna get in the front a little bit. So, Juneteenth debriefing, Angela and Anne. Look, this was a six-day event. Some of us came to some, all of us came to some things, but Angela and Anne were at every single thing. So, they need a round of applause. I am so proud. So proud. Where's Angela?
Thank you. Juneteenth, it was, I was supposed to say for the district ones, it was a little different. We were trying to show the diversity of the arts and we did. In hindsight, I probably would say I was crazy for having all those days. I'll never do it again. Need somebody to slap me if I come up with an idea like that again. But, you know, we had a little hiccup in the beginning that Friday before when Alex called me, I was worried about Alex and his sanity and he was worried about me, but I was fine. I was like, it's gonna be okay. And it was.
I was upset for you.
I was not upset. And Anne kept saying, you're not upset? And I'm like, no, I'm not upset. It was just a little hiccup. But our crew, Noel and Baron, they just came through like, they were just great. They were great. They, we worked it out. They talked to me. We caught, we conversed about it. We had not planned anything during the day, so it was nice being a benefit to somebody else that really needed the space. Although I was concerned about the staffing, because I knew it was gonna put a lot of extra work on his staff, but they didn't mind. At least they said they didn't mind. But it turned out to be a blessing in disguise because they set up everything and had everything for us. So, that was nice. Appreciate everybody's help. Had good artists come out. The spoken word, I thought, was well-attended. I thought the literary cafe was good. People said they wished they could have stayed longer. And one of the things, when they were talking about the park, some of the people, some of the artists had come early and they'd gone and walked around the park and said that, how much they loved it. One artist was talking about moving to Duncanville already, things like that. So, I mean, that's nice. They do love the park. I just, for your review, we had budgeted 6,500 for the Juneteenth celebration. Because we had 20,000 that the city had approved for us for some of the things we're trying to finish out for this season. We spent 4,700 on performance fees. We paid the artists for Tuesday's, Wednesday's, and Friday's performance. They were actually paid for their performances. Monday, with the artists that were there, they were able to not only speak about their work, but sell it if they had something to sell. We had a Jovi's gift card. We had budgeted, well, budgeted 1,400, thinking that for the week and for our Saturday event. But then sitting in the office with Alex, and he worked with me on that, we came up with an idea whereas, eh, go buy some eggos, you know? I wouldn't try to feed everybody a gourmet breakfast, but we were trying to promote culinary art. We had Jovi's gift card, so for all the little treats and stuff, because I wanted to make sure I saved enough for Sarah. We only spent $205.19 on water and chips and things like that. And we gave them to the kids afterwards because we didn't want it to go stale before your event. So, it didn't mean, it didn't make sense to hold on to it. Chicken, I was working with a place, and I hope all of y'all will go there sometimes, called JJ's Chicken, Fish and Chicken. And that particular, they don't open early, but they did. They came in early and cooked the fish, I mean, sorry, the chicken for us. And I knew we weren't gonna have any chicken left over. I already knew that. Even though we had maybe a smaller number of people, nobody, nobody was gonna leave any chicken there. But that particular amount was donated. So, we only spent the 355 dollars. So, we didn't wind up doing this whole 1,400 that I thought we would need. And we didn't have any incidentals. As far as promoting and so forth, I thought it was good. I thanked the library and the rec center and the city. It was on the arts feed constantly out there. The library was posting and promoting it on an ongoing basis, all of our events. And the rec center was too, because I'm on theirs. And I appreciate everybody's help that came out. By Wednesday, I was just like, my confidence was going this way. And Anne stepped in and as far as being at the forefront. And then on Thursday, when Ron called me with his suggestions, I was like, whatever you want to do.
That's actually how the conversation went.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, I got it.
But now, but from beginning to end, so it turned out good and I do appreciate all of your help.
You know what? This is one of those things where you'll hear me say this all the time. This Arts Commission doesn't always agree, but we're always coming together. And it was so wonderful because six days, but it was so wonderful to see that.
Let me add one thing. Sarah, just so you know, the plates and the napkins and utensils that were left over, I took them to the theater annex for your event. Oh, so don't let me forget when we get closer to, oh, that I have.
Thank you for keeping them there.
If it says Arts Commission.
Thank you for keeping them there. Because otherwise, they'd have to go under his desk.
Yeah, I was trying to, I was trying not to give anything to Alex as far as.
The Saturday roundtable was inspired. That was not something that was, you know, I would have expected. But I think it was brilliant. I have sent the notes that I took to you and Alex and to all the artists. Haven't heard back yet about any changes, but there's some really good ideas, some very specific ideas came from that. So, if you ever thought of that, kudos. That was great.
We wanted the roundtable. When thinking about it, I was thinking, yeah, they have breakfast at Tiffany's. I was thinking breakfast with the arts. That's the idea. And then the community and the arts come together and discuss it. And then Ron just took the lead on that. That was great.
So, you know, I want to say this, I want to say this about Angela's idea that, for those who weren't there, the topic was what is Duncanville to an artist? And part of it was I wanted us to be able to bring together our artist community. But you know what they did? They were talking about bringing the community. And so, it was this wonderful experience, like when we bring our artists together, they're thinking about the community. And that was part of that. And thank you for taking the notes. That was inspired. That was wonderful.
I think the whole thing was permeated with meaning about the Juneteenth, the history, the purpose, the unity it inculcated. And every night was special and every artist was contributing wonderful events. And there were different characteristics of each program. Demonica was there for several programs and she represented the mayor. The mayor came. Oh, one of the great moments, the mayor was asked to be a drummer and he got up. And we have a great picture of him, you know, like this. And that was really exciting. I just think it, the whole thing. So, I have a present for Angela. And I think for anyone who wants to sign it.
We all do. Don't give it to her yet.
For next year, I ordered this thing that could be on the podium because it says Juneteenth and it has that Juneteenth flag. So, that's for next year.
Got to put it in the bag.
And all we need to do is remember to give her energy and encouragement when she gets tired. Because it was a lot to carry forward.
It was.
And it was fun to watch. Amy was scurrying back and forth with waffles from the toaster. We had to cook the toaster. The toasters had to be in the rec center kitchen. They couldn't be in that area. So, here she was running back and forth with these waffles covered up to stay hot. And of course, Ron was leading this incredible discussion. He was part of it. The caliber of artists was really high. And there were so many good suggestions, particularly about the need for place for the arts. Not just temporary spots, but there was so many good suggestions.
Do you know what Kathy Wyvern said to me when we were talking? Because before, before the artists sat down, then I told them what the topic was gonna be. She said, and I asked her, I said, it's important that Duncanville understands what artists need to be successful. Artists, the arts are not a means to an end. We have to recognize our community is built for artists, for all this to work. So, I asked her, what do you need to be successful at Duncanville? And of course, you know, she's a very accomplished, a very accomplished TV presenter and artist. She said, never in my career has anyone ever asked me what I need to be successful. And so, when she talked about Duncanville for the arts, they were all talking about how special it was. And then because she saw everybody here scurrying and running, and I'm like, where's my chicken? You know?
You were either. You put so much emphasis on the conversation that it became a really elevated event, you know?
That means a lot coming from you. I appreciate it. Okay.
Wait, you're ready. I got a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
Do you want me to attempt to reserve the space for next year?
We don't even know what we're gonna do yet, but.
Go ahead and do it for two weeks for her.
We reserve it for a week and then we can decide early and then release it, release the time that we're not gonna utilize. At least we'll have a location because that's the, that was the whole idea.
Yeah, because when you called, when Alice called on Friday about the hiccup, I was like.
But at least we found out on Friday and not Monday, because that would have been a disaster. Originally, Curtis Ferguson was gonna bring art for the whole week. And it was gonna be protected and everything. We were gonna meet at 11 o'clock on Monday to set up all this visual art and set the room up. Well, we couldn't get in until five something. So, but Friday, we found out.
So, that was because of the hiccup that they had. But they took care of it. Yeah, that was the only thing we couldn't do was display the art.
We miss Jeremy and other city council members.
Any other conversation, yeah, so if you could reserve it, any other conversation on Juneteenth? I'm gonna go ahead and move on. Number nine is Independence Day Parade and Celebration Participation. Both Angela and I asked us to be on there. I think we're both having Lions ask us if we're gonna participate in the Fourth of July. Anne says, no, thank you. It's hot.
Bloom Fest was really hard and that was in the evening, wouldn't it? I mean, they eat, just trying to do something with art outside. It was much easier in the library, inside. That's from my perspective, but I'm not an outdoor person.
Suggestions, recommend, I know you're probably gonna be doing other things.
The theater has, will have an entry if I'm in town. I may be out of town, but if I'm in town, I will be with the theater on, with their entry. They, I mean, we will definitely have one.
So, how, does anybody have a cool car they want to ride in the parade otherwise?
I don't even have a car.
Does anyone?
Can we paint in advance? You know, with art.
Right, can we paint on your, well, your car would be good to paint on.
I wasn't, I wasn't interested in the parade, but I wouldn't mind if we have something in the park in the evening.
Alex, can, we have a table in the park or how does that work?
Devin is waiting for the results of tonight's meeting.
Okay, so who wants to man the table in the park?
I can help.
Okay. What are the requirements? How long do we have to be there?
If it starts at four, you have to be there probably about 2:30, 3:00 for setup. Will I ask Devin to do again a tent for us? Excuse me, last time, I put a lifesaver in my mouth. We just need to decide what do we want to do. We have the easels.
The easels and the boards are at the annex as well. Arts Commission has little ones.
Oh, those boards, that's right.
Because the easels don't have a backing to them. So, I brought pieces of plywood to put on the easel so that they could hang on them, they're not poke through. So, that was.
If we want to do the paint, I think you said.
I have the paints and the markers and other supplies at my house.
Yeah, I think it would be easy just to get those, those things, like what we had at the library, those things. Easels, little, those little.
Canvas.
Canvas.
Yeah, they're just expensive. So, that was the reason we didn't. Really? They really weren't. But now we have money, so.
You know, what their budget was.
Yeah, I mean, that was before the city had approved any money for us, so we were doing.
Because the libraries were really small. That wouldn't really fit on the easel. It needs to be.
To get the bigger ones like at Hobby Lobby or Michael's or whatever, they're just, yeah, I looked at them in fact before.
Because I saw some on Amazon for like a hundred and something dollars, or maybe like a hundred pieces.
So, Sarah wants to be there? Who else wants to be there?
I know it's July 4th, so people may be out of town or with family.
Oh, the time though, so it'll be at 3:00.
Well, it would probably be.
If you want to and you know that it's gonna be manned, so I'm guessing that the parade isn't.
I'm not afraid of that.
I'm not afraid of that.
Yeah.
Okay. What I can do. Okay, um, what I can do is I can just make sure that we get the table and the tent taken care of.
Okay.
And then you can build it from there.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that you've got.
Something going on.
Yeah. And if that falls through, I would just need to know, just enough time to tell her, don't dedicate anybody to setting something up for that.
Okay.
But I, that, that doesn't particularly all have to be sorted out tonight, just, the important thing is not doing the parade, are doing, are intending to be at the celebration would like a table tent, and then we can build from there.
And if we just want to do drawings or something like, we'll do that. Well, I'll talk, we'll talk.
So we're good for a tent, not for the parade?
Yes.
Cool, thank you guys, everybody. Uh, item ten, Hispanic Heritage Planning. Sarah, what was yours?
Um, okay, so, yeah, so I think we're going to go with the idea of what we talked about last time, and having like a pre-party before the actual September twentieth event that the city's already planned and that we're going to be involved in. Um, so September nineteenth is a Friday, and Amy gave a great suggestion about, um, having it at Main Station in that, in that, I guess, like vacant area in between the theater and the restaurants. So it'll be great because, um, Amy's already having a show that weekend.
I'm not going to have a show that night.
Oh, you're not going to have a show?
No, so we rearranged it, so between the last time we talked, we wanted to move our demons of Fleet Street into October because we kill people. And we felt like it was really important to do that in October, so that frees up that weekend.
That's when I like to kill people.
To kill people in October, okay.
Well, we do, we're going to kill people in October, so that frees up that evening, so you can have the band and do, but we can still, the theater can still play with you, I mean, we, we can have the outdoor lights on, you know, do all sorts of cool stuff.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Show that night, so, yeah.
Okay, um, and maybe you can tell people from the theater that.
Oh, yeah, no, if we have rehearsals and stuff, we'll get on, we, we can, yeah, we can.
Perfect, um, so, so before I knew that, I was thinking, because I remember you said the show started at eight.
Yeah.
And so you wanted us to be pretty much done by seven thirty.
Yeah, but I thought this would be a better than win for you, then we don't have to worry about stopping at eight and, you know.
Okay, yeah, well, um, I had reached out to Los Jefes and talked to the owner to see if they would be interested in participating and, you know, we can pay them for catering and it'll be like briefs to the public, like food. So anyway, um, they gave me a quote and said they could serve two hundred people, uh, two tacos and some chowder beans each person, and that'll be fifteen hundred dollars, and that includes servers and they will be out there, you know, handing this food out. I was like, cool, that's, that's good, um, I asked for the estimate of two hundred, just because I was, you know, kind of thinking like, okay, we might have some theater people there, we might, when we promote it. I mean, of course, we could have more, and I said it's possible, maybe I'll ask you what the estimate would be for three hundred, but we'll start with two hundred for now, first two hundred people, you know, get food and then after that, it's out, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, so anyway, so that, that was, uh, that was the estimate he gave me, um, and that was, uh, today he gave me that estimate. Um, I haven't secured any like mariachis or anything, but I, I know, uh, Mary, Marianne, you were talking about, uh, having maybe some performers or, you know.
Dancers.
Dancers, yeah, 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 so I didn't know, maybe you had, um, talked to anybody or.
What happened, but I can't, I can't know.
Does my school have a pop floor poke true?
Uh, I'm not sure, but.
Cause I know Great Prairie does, they're award winning, and I didn't know.
Yeah.
My person is the grand prix.
Yeah, so I mean, it'd be really cool to highlight that, plus that always brings parents and family out as well.
Right, like if you have like some kids performing and stuff, so.
So that's the nineteenth too?
The nineteenth, yeah, so maybe if you don't mind, like checking with your people, and then, um, I can continue looking for mariachi band. Um, but good to know we don't have to be quiet by eight, so we can.
But we, we finalize, once we start applying for rights and we're.
Yeah.
Trying to figure it all out, that's.
So we can, so we can put the margarita machine in the theater. Finally, finally.
So, um, when I had pitched it to Los Jefes, I had said it would be probably between four and eight. So, um, I think I can keep it that way for now until we kind of secure other, other things, just, you know, that's a good timeline for now, I think.
I think it's a good timeline, I mean, people are going to hang out later, but it's, you know, that way, like we talked about anyway.
Yeah, so they can do their, they can visit the other restaurants or whatever after eight o'clock, I mean, I think, I think that's a good time unless you guys feel differently, but it sounds like we kind of agree. Um, and then of course, like for the day of the twentieth, um, you know, having the booth out there, obviously, like I've talked about little, uh, things that the kids could do, like making little sombreros or painting, uh, not painting, maybe coloring some skulls, like some ornament skulls, um, stuff like that.
Twenty?
On the twentieth, yeah, so, um, so, yeah, I think we have money for those things. And then I know we have money on the Jovi card, so I thought like, I can use that for snacks for the twentieth.
And we need to, Alex has it.
Alex, okay, yeah, so I mean, we have time, but.
Right, and it's got expiration date on it, so we need to make sure.
Oh, okay.
Exploration is coming up.
Oh, okay, so maybe I buy it before, good to know, I can check with you on that if you don't. Or you.
Let's get together soon.
Okay, okay, so, so that, and then I also thought about maybe having like some goodie bags, like on the nineteenth that we can pass out to people who show up. And in those goodie bags will not only be, um, like maybe business cards from local businesses from Duncanville and like the Arts Commission info, but just little, I don't know, maybe some candies, maybe like little, like chips or something and just kind of, give something, give, give kids slash adults something fun, um, maybe. Yeah, of course, yeah, Hispanic Heritage stickers or maybe fun facts or something, you know, we can put in there. Um, of course, that would be limited too, so, you know, first come, first served, get, get those, so those are my thoughts.
You know, you might also, I don't think I'm making this up, but I thought Tiffany had considered maybe doing a, one of the business mixers at the same time, to bolster, because she could do it there, I don't know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
This could be pure work of fiction, but I feel like she had mentioned that at some time, I don't know.
Okay, I can get with her and ask her and see if.
The other thing we could do is theater, um, if the band needs power or whatever, oh, we appear, power outside.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking like.
That's always an issue.
A microphone or something?
Yeah, no, and, and I can help make that happen.
Okay.
If they, if, if the, the band will have their own sound system probably.
Probably, yeah.
But if, but if they don't, or if you need a separate speaker and microphone, come on in.
Okay, yeah, because I thought maybe it would be good to introduce ourselves and just kind of greet everybody in the beginning, so maybe having something like that.
Yeah, we have outdoor outlets that I normally turn off, but I'll turn them on for us.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Quick question, you said there, is there funding in case?
Yes.
Funding?
Yes.
So you had people that were paid, I can tell.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, it'll be funded.
But we'll need to know what their budget is.
This is completely separate thing, but it is related, this would be your last public event as a group.
Oh.
As this current body.
Thanks, Alex.
I just figured that may add some. Yeah, some, some, some importance to it.
Okay, I like it.
I'm glad you were.
Maybe we'll put pictures of ourselves like in the baggies of people who are in the rest.
Each one of the painted skulls could be a.
I like, I like the skull, I've, have you looked at some skulls?
I have, I've looked at them all from Amazon, and I have the link saved, but I just didn't know. I was trying to figure out this whole budget thing and I didn't know, like.
It's, because right now, what we have left would be somewhere like about sixteen thousand, or fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, probably in the.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, it won't be fifteen thousand, but yeah, it would be, we should be able to do it from Amazon. Yeah, and the, the thing too, I was trying to figure out like what, how, how many to get, you know what I mean? Because like, two hundred, is that enough, or is that too little, that's too much, you know?
It's hit or miss, it's hit or miss and with the kids.
Yeah.
I know we did paintings and all this, oh, it's just non-stop coming, I mean, we just had to really just shut it down.
We finally had.
We just tried to tone it.
Started throwing rocks at the kids, yelling at them.
I mean, I figured it would be like something simple would go along with it.
And if you run out, then we just finish.
Exactly, then we're done.
So with the, um, Juneteenth, we did do a five hundred dollar ad buy on this. So you may want to keep that in mind, and then we can expand the, we can connect it as far as advertising and saying, if you're coming for the one, don't promote.
Don't promote.
And, uh.
Oh, yeah, for sure, I think, yeah.
Cause that'll help with.
Yeah.
Meeting the qualifications and everything too.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Um, so, um, when I have like the link, or I have links like to what I would like to get for the twentieth for our booth, do I send that to you or? Okay, so, and I can.
Yes, please.
Add the estimate with that. But yeah, that's all for me, oh, go ahead.
I just have one thing, remember we have also, um, in September, and sort of correlates, correlation with Hispanic Heritage was the movie?
But that's right.
That's right, a million miles.
A million.
Miles away or something, yeah, a million miles away, and we're, we're, we are supposed to be co-promoting with that too, um, for that evening, and I was thinking that the activity for the kids, wouldn't it be cute if we just had the tent over there and we had them painting moon rocks?
Oh, that'd be cute.
All right, I don't want to get off, I don't want to get off.
No, 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 it's, 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 it's for the, it's part of the Hispanic. I'm Hispanic.
What's the date of that?
Oh, maybe it's on the calendar.
It, it was, yeah, but that was part of the Hispanic Heritage.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as it is.
Portion.
I think I have the thirteenth of September as that film night.
The film night, and so some of us will need to be there for that, but we need an activity to, to tell the rec center, because they're the one coordinating that, remember we said we would do a couple of movies with them? And well, sponsor, we selected, we selected the movie, so we need to.
I think that's a cute idea.
Yeah, and that's, I was thinking when there, of the art activity, maybe moon rocks, or painting the moon, I don't know. But I like the, I love the rock thing that, that they do. So that's something to think about, so that's on the thirteenth? I didn't.
Thirteen.
It's a film, okay, so, that's a busy time.
All right, any other business on that item? Okay, we're going to go to item eleven, that's Tiffany's, but she's not here. So unless anyone wants to talk on Arts and Business Mixer?
I have something, there was a location, oh, uh, you know where Clay Place was, there's a new.
Mm-hmm, it's a restaurant.
Bistro there. Anyways, they are just opened and there's a, a music or art, something next to it. That might be a good location for a future mixer, and they are, uh, uh, the restaurant is willing to be open other hours for like special events, so, you know, it might be a good place to do a mixer for the future.
Fun.
What's it called?
So is it X?
X E L A, but Sheila.
Shell?
Shell.
Yeah, I've, I've had several people come up and say that'd be a good place to have it.
Yeah.
Would you, would you remind Tiffany, would you tell?
If, if I can.
That's okay.
Is it planned for this summer?
I don't, I don't think we have a planned date on it, we don't have a date.
Next.
We didn't have, we didn't have a date, but it was part of that twenty thousand.
It was, so it is funded, I know, this again, this is, take this all the grain of salt, I'm not sure if this is accurate. I, I remember her thinking about doing, because the, one we had that was a Latin theme last year was super popular, the tango dancers, salsa dancers, um, so I feel like she said she wanted to do something in partnership with Hispanic Heritage. I feel like, and then there was a, and I think we actually have funding for three.
In the minutes, she suggested that the next mixer take place in August and associated and went back to school for educators. She wanted to do it as a carnival affair where people could donate back to school supplies. And maybe use it as a touch point with educators.
So maybe at that one?
Cool, that's a great idea. All right, uh, anywhere, are there anything else on that topic? So we'll get with, uh, uh, Tiffany. Item twelve, Dr. Perry is going to bring the house down with the Macmillan Institute Reception update.
Yeah, it's a sobering report, so I, I got the idea that maybe, um, I'd reach out to Claudia to see if she wanted to do a reception in July since we did have some funding that came through. Um, and so I asked her what she thought, and she said, I'm torn by this topic, I really do like the idea of this event, and I don't want to be stingy about our work, however, I have to confess that I've, that given how we've been cold-shouldered by Duncanville ISD, not in a mean way, just firmly told, no, I'm not as interested as I was before in having a Duncanville event like this right now. The truth is, we will be doing a lot more work with DeSoto ISD educators and even with Dallas ISD educators this coming year. So programs to which we invite neighbors are not really going to be a priority for us going forward. Neighbors will still be invited, but with the exception of a few events, I believe that constituents in our programs will mainly be the primary and secondary educators we came here to serve going forward. This is what we've always intended, but now it looks like it might become a reality. After we have proven our educational model elsewhere, like the academy work, that we are grooming in DeSoto ISD and will be starting in Dallas ISD, this coming school year, we will come back to show Duncanville the proof that students and teachers can do this kind of education. Hopefully that will encourage Duncanville to see how this would be good for the district too. But right now, the rather odd relationship that exists between the city of Duncanville and the school district means that cultivating and informing neighbors in Duncanville won't really help us make headway with the district. So I think I'd rather wait to have an event like this until we are in the position where we can show Duncanville ISD the efficacy of this vision. Then it would make sense to have Duncanville citizens and neighbors in another event like this to the Mac to show them what we're all about. I think that would mean next summer. Thank you for building bridges, I love your spirit and hope. So it was, it was discouraging, um, and I guess I have had such good experience over there and will be participating in July in the salon and then, um, what they, it's a, um, communitas. It's a, it's a conversation about aesthetics, okay, so it's, it's wonderful. But it feels like right now it's just reaching out to a few people, um, that are affiliated more with their programs. Is that how you would characterize it too, you've been involved?
There are a lot of alumni who come, besides that, good teachers. I'll just say a little bit about the, um, the school board, I did take a member over and his wife, they were amazed, loved the program, his wife had been a teacher here for a long, long time. She was in tears by the time the presentation was finished. And so it's, it's not the board, I don't think, they were very enthusiastic, so. Maybe there's a way to do it that's not just citizens too, if that makes sense.
Well, I was hoping the generality of Duncanville would, would come to know more about it and its aims and, you know, it does sponsor some film events and some things that are public oriented, but.
Well, yes, but the main thrust is teacher training and a program that's unique to her and, um.
Well, and the reality is, so when we first started having conversations with them, there was no Art, Duncanville Arts Fund. Now there is a fund, should she choose to apply for funds, it'd be ready for her, and we're not the school board. So should she want to build those bridges, there are people here who could advise her. But it is disappointing, but should she want to come back and revisit, there is an application process that there wasn't before, so. Hopefully that'll be helpful for her, encouraging, and it is disappointing.
Yeah, and let's talk about some things she could consider applying for grant for, some creative things that use money.
I'm going to go ahead, is there any more on that topic?
No, I have Demonica, I want this.
Yes, please.
So item thirteen is Arts Funding Grant Cycle Updates, is that yours?
Um, at this point, in your packet, there are the four submissions that have come in so far. On the thirtieth is the deadline to apply. Uh, I know that there was a fifth applicant who called to discuss it, asked some questions. I encouraged, it was, um, Village Tech, I encouraged them to go ahead and apply as any decision would ultimately made, made by the Arts Commission and the City Council. So, um, everything is on track at this point. I've, uh, only encountered one technical issue with it, with one submission, but we worked around it. I was, uh, able to adjust anything that they encountered, um, pretty quickly, and it was right at the beginning. And, uh, seems to be going pretty well so far. So the intention is it'll cut off on the thirtieth, these are going to come back to you on the sixteenth of July. I wanted to make sure that I walked out of here knowing if you wanted the applicants present or to present on that night. Because at this point, that is not part of the policy, but maybe that is something that you want. You want to meet the applicants, I'd like to know that in advance so I can let that know.
I mean, if there are five, it might be interesting, but, so what's the precedent, what if we get a hundred applications? Yeah.
They don't know that you'll get a hundred applications between now.
Well, you know what I mean.
Monday, but.
So what do you guys want, you wanna see the applicants present or you just wanna read the applications?
I'm okay with just reading the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, just read the application.
We don't need to see the applicants, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't think so.
What do you think?
What do you wanna see?
What do you think, Anne?
I, I was just thinking about how we got to know Candace and Cedric, I don't know if they've applied, so I haven't studied all this, but, um.
See it here, yeah.
You know, it, it's interesting to get to know people, um, that are interfacing with us. It is interesting if we heard their little spiel or met them. It's separate from a discussion about whether we, you know, maybe five minutes each or something, they could send a video maybe.
Tim, what do you want, well, what do you wanna do?
Well, I mean, when somebody applies for hot funds in front of the City Council, do they, does somebody get up there and make a little talk, or how does that work?
Um, not always, depends on what they're asking for, but, um, trying to think, hot funds normally.
It'll typically be, it'll typically be Victor or somebody from the Economic Development team will typically get up there and do a presentation on it. And then if there are, most, and most of the time, the person that's asking or the applicant will be there to ask questions, but there have been plenty of instances where the application is submitted before council and the applicant is not present.
Sarah, what do you think?
Um, I kinda agree with Anne, I like to see people and, uh, I think it's good networking for us, especially since we're trying to build the arts and really advocate for them, I think it's important that we, uh, see them face to face and, you know, see what they have to say and. I mean, I think we should give them a time limit though, I don't think they should go on for thirty minutes, but, but, um, I would like to see them.
I like your point about advocacy, you know, and what do you think, Marianne?
I just would wonder, for those who couldn't come, if there would be any sort of dissonance with that, like. Yeah, if, if these all were to come, that'd be great, but if three can and one couldn't, I wonder if that'd be a, an issue for them, it's not mandatory though, is it, so. They wouldn't have to.
I'm just asking if you'd like me to put out an invitation, I wasn't gonna, and because of the sign of the policy, it's not mandatory, the only mandatory, uh, attendance per the policy is for appeals. So if you decide against, and then council decides against, they can still put in an appeal, but they have to be present for that appeal. That's the only thing that's in person.
If it's not mandatory, is it fair that some come and some don't? That's an open question.
Well, I think, I think it's, it's optional, I mean, if you had given the option, I guess my only concern is that some people aren't good at giving presentations. And some, um, are, some people are eloquent at speaking and some are not. And I would hate for a really good artist to lose out on having an opportunity to get the grant because they didn't really present well in front of us. Cause we, we all have our biases when it comes to certain things and, and, and what, we, we do, we all, but. Think you have it or not, yeah, there's some biases, and so I think by not having them here, it just gives a playing field, to, in my mind, just gives everybody a lo- a, a level playing field.
Unless we know some of them already.
Right, unless we know some, but if we know them then, or if there's something that's going on, then we also know to refuse ourselves from, um, from that, whatever, but, um, I don't know, cause you know, somebody comes up and, and they, you know, their verbiage or whatever, whatever, then I'll be like, I can't see that person being, putting on a program, cause they can't barely talk, you know.
Or the, the opposite too, they do a really, really fabulous one and their.
And they're, and they're a mess, and it's a mess, yeah, so I guess that's my, that's just my thought, not a bias is that sometimes.
This is, um, and I'm assuming it would be, if somebody did show up, it would be for the special meeting, um, where we review the grants, applications, is that special meeting a public, um, will we be televised for that special meeting? To go through there, how, can we be candid as we, as we have discussions concerning, if we are.
Well, so if this is our, I mean, this is our, I mean, this is my thing on this, uh, this'll be the very first time this body came together to determine the financial outcome of individuals. It would not hurt if people saw the way the sausage was made, you know, for transparency's sake. So we've never done this before, there's no precedent, so it might be encouraging for folks to see how we talk about it.
Do you have Economic Development that has to make decisions on who they give money to, is that a public process?
Well, well, theirs is a little different, because we're actually appointed from City Councils, so we're part of the city, they're their own private corporations. I mean, so it depends, I mean, so, so Tim, I mean, why, that's a pointed question, do you, do you, do you not want them there because you wanna be really, do you think you'd make a better decision if you could be more candid without hurting somebody's feelings?
I, I think of juryed events, things that are juryed, and I think it's generally pretty, um, discreet. The juries are discreet and they're, and they have candid conversations over works. Um, and they, they come to conclusions and, and if you have a camera in front of the jury, it's, you know, your behavior is one thing versus if you don't have a camera in front of the jury, then your behavior and what you say and the freedom to, to say what you need to say as professionals seems to be curtailed a little bit. That's the only reason I bring it up, uh, whether the persons are or not, it's, it's.
Is there, is there, is there an open records policy that we have to advise by? Or open meeting, sorry?
Well, I mean, it's still gonna be an open meeting, but I was not intending on adding an additional stream to this because of the contract with the streamer, the number of streams that we add in this being a special meeting, and you still may wanna have another regular meeting that we would need to stream. So with this being the first one, with this being you going through all the applications, with this being a situation of seeing how the engine works, figuring out how the engine works on this, I wasn't planning on streaming it.
So it's not in violation of any?
No, because all, because all of the documents will ultimately be open records, I mean, at this point, what is sitting in front of you are all four of the applications that are currently in sans any financial information. So anything about their vendor packet is not included in there, and their, uh, direct deposit and all of that stuff that's gonna go to procurement to enter that, that is not in your packets, so everything in this packet that is set in front of you, that's what's going to wind up being posted with this, with the minutes of this meeting.
Tim, how would you feel if?
That will be the same thing with that meeting too.
So Tim, how would you feel if it was open for like the public who wanted to come and watch, cause theoretically, if you invite them to kind of present, they need, I don't know, how do you feel like people are just, yeah, how do you feel like people just come in the room to watch, like, well, like we have here?
I don't know, I don't, you know, that may be different, that's, that seems different to me. Versus if it's televised.
Do you all care if it's not televised? Or if it's not breaking any rules or laws or?
I would, I would like to speak a little bit to like what Tim was saying as well, I think Tim and I are in a more unique position because we've been in, we've both been in the position of applying for arts, hot funds grants in the past, and we've spoken and we've presented to City Council. Um, and then we've been in the position where we were asked not to present, um, when we presented, we were given an eight minute time limit, I think that was it, don't go over, sit down and be quiet. And that was fine, um, and, and there's pros and cons, I know what he's saying about, um, you wanna be able to have a candid discussion. I mean, these all look fine, but what if we get one that, you know, you wanna be able to say, I'm not really sure this qualifies as art, and if we say that, we're not trying to be rude, we just mean, that's our opinion, but that can be construed differently by different people, so I think it's, I think it's best that it not be streamed. Um, I think we can have a candid conversation, I think we're all professionals, I don't think we're anything unkind, but I do think that it's important that we be able to be candid as we review the applications. If we're feeling that we can't be candid, then, um, the, the, the cool thing with City Council did it, was Economic Development vetted those before everyone went to council. So if Economic Development didn't think it was worthy, it never came to City Council, we were calling them and said, um, you might wanna find Tim this year just a little bit. Um, so that we had the opportunity to do that. I tend to agree with Angela, I like the no presentation, I used to be totally in favor of the presentation, um, and I liked doing it. But I think that it, I like the blank plate thing, but I'm not against the presentation, like you said, there has to be a timeline, I mean, there would have to be.
Is it, when they apply, this is a question, it's a query, is it, we didn't have anything on the application that they, that there was an option to present, right? Is it, is it? If, if, if the, if the commission wanted to invite people to present, and you said, okay, congratulations, your, your application is being considered on July X Y Z, you can come to present to the Arts Commission if you choose, you have eight minutes, blah, blah, blah. Is that, is that the right way to do it? Is there a better way to do it, is there a wrong way to do it?
Well, I've just read all four applications.
Of course you do.
Right, I'm not sure how, what the presentation would be, does that make sense?
Okay.
They, uh, you know, their performance things, their, um, almost all performance things, so I don't know how they would do that. I think they're really good as far as what they, you know, they've, uh, profiled here.
You, the only reason I brought this up is cause this came up in the last meeting, you had discussed about having people here, and I just wanted to make sure that I knew what the decision was before that meeting happens.
I think that, I, I like what you're saying is, we just ha- make a decision based on what we see here, if they wanna make the presentation, uh, have a little short video of, you know, part of the dance or whatever the program is. Um, that's, I, I, I think if we can do it without seeing, you know, having to make the decision right there, um, I think we can make a more equitable decision.
And we can pivot if this doesn't work, so let me ask you this, is there anybody here who would flat be offended if it was not streamed and we didn't ask for a presentation? Does that make sense, Dr. Perry? So it wasn't streamed, so people could have come and sent in the audience like here, but it would not be on YouTube so that we could have candid conversations. And we wouldn't have it, they wouldn't come in and present, we would just look at their applications and talk amongst ourselves.
But you're saying we wouldn't necessarily invite them to come to listen to our conversation, right?
Yeah.
That. They could show up though.
They could show up.
They could be, if they're welcome to come and talk.
One other aspect of this, I know when we've done jury duty for, uh, like film festivals, we've done it individually, we've watched the film and then we've filled out, we've scaled it, you know, we've given point system instead of like a, just a conversation and voting, I don't know, it's, it's interesting, I think we all should come prepared.
Of course.
Um.
So what, so what's the consensus, what do you wanna do? I mean, cause, let me tell you what I've heard the most of, I mean, what I, and tell me if I'm right, what I've heard of, everyone's welcome to come, but we don't wanna stream it because we wanna feel like we can have an honest, candid conversation. But the reality, as far as a presentation, that'd be great, but right now for the first one, we just need to talk amongst ourselves to figure it out, is that kind of the consensus?
It's a bit weird.
So what do y'all think?
Is it something we could change in the future, like, you know, we got a jazz band here, they're not gonna be coming, but my, it'd have been good to hear what they actually sound like.
Do they, so, do they upload, do they put a link to a, a YouTube, or is there any way that, that?
Some of these are some links.
Okay, so we could see media if they provided it.
Yes.
So a jazz band probably would have provided it. And I kinda, I want us to be prepared, but since we've never done this before, we've never worked as a group like this, I would love for us to come together, very prepared, and talk amongst ourselves about it.
Is there any way to have a closed meeting though, the people that are applying for grants, it, it doesn't seem like they should be here while we discuss their applications.
That's.
There's no way to close it, huh?
It's a cliche.
That, that is a privilege that, I just got clarity on that, I just confirmed that, that is a privilege reserved for D C, D C and City Council.
So. It'd be nice. Okay, so let's, let's try to get a consensus on this so we can move forward. Is it okay if we show up, it's not streamed, and whatever media they provide to us is what we use to make determination? So if it's a jazz band and they send a link to a concert, we have it, or if it's a?
Yeah, there's dancers, we've got dancers, dancing.
Right, so that theoretically, if they wanted us to see them dance, they would send a link to a recital or something, right?
And then everybody's like, sit down.
Well, I can't.
Well, and I guess, I guess. Could we make a determination on a dance group without seeing them dance?
Yes. They made determinations on the community theater for years, we didn't, we didn't, we just, we didn't come in and do anything, we did a PowerPoint.
You're like.
I think, I think, I think we have to be very clear about what kind of presentation.
You're like, hold my beer, hold on, let me tell you what they can do.
I mean, you, we don't need them to come in and perform for us, we need them to give a short PowerPoint, just like every other's people do, do a short presentat- A presentation is different from a performance, you're not asking for a performance, we're asking for a presentation so that we'll know what they're applying to do. Um, I.
It is very specific, I mean, these are very specific.
Let's just go, let's just, okay, let's just go, I'm here, everybody, and whatever the consensus is, Mac, what do you want?
Uh, not streaming and I'm going to, uh.
So no live presentation? Dr. Perry, what do you want?
I would welcome short presentations, but I can live with, without them. Um, I wish the meeting was closed when we really discussed that we felt, but I guess we can't do that. But it seems like City Council must do that.
And I was just saying it's a privilege for City Council.
Well, because of the fact that they have to go behind closed doors to consult with the city attorney and that's, and, and since you're an advisory, since you're advising the City Council, all of that has to be on the record.
Okay.
So it has to be open door, we have to have the minutes for all of it.
So, Dr. Perry tells what you want.
Um, is, how competitive are these things?
We're gonna figure it out, we're just doing this, let's find out what you want. What do you want?
Oh, what do I?
I'm sorry.
I meant to abstain from all this.
Well, I mean, so it's helpful for us to know, would you be okay if it was not streamed, people could come watch, but there's not gonna be a live presentation? Would you be able to make a, a, a fair determination based on that, for this first one?
I would hope so.
Okay. Carrie.
Thing with feathers, um, yes, I think that's fine, I think in the future maybe to talk about getting a.
This is gonna give us a place to figure out how we do this, or future commissions, uh, Sarah.
Yes, I agree, I'm okay with, um, no stream and no live presentation.
Tim, my friend.
I am, I'm, I'm in agreement a- as well, no presentation and, uh, uh, oh, sorry, yeah, no presentation and, and no live stream. Are there best practices that other commissions, you know, how do they, how do they go about it, I'm just curious if anyone's seen any of that.
This is my first arts commission.
Yeah, no, you know, we've been collecting data from other commissions.
He knows.
So just a thing, like eight, six or seven gives you some evaluation criteria, obviously, one of the ones you'll see and say, well, we have no prior engagement. Nobody has prior engagement with the commission programs at this point, so other than that, it's available funding, artistic merit and creativity, community engagement and tourism benefit, cause again, this money is coming out of hot funds, accessibility, inclusivity, application completeness and clarity and connection to Duncanville. Those are the ones in the, uh, policy that you recommended to City Council, so you can always use that as a foundation for when you go and evaluate these.
Okay. Amy, satellite feed, life?
No stream, no presentation.
Alright, I think that's a consensus, and, and here's the thing, guys, we're gonna figure this out and do it, and the future commission is gonna really figure this out, so. Give us, give us a chance to, we'll make our mistakes together, we'll fix our mistakes together. Um, okay, so there is a, item fourteen, there's a special meeting to be held on July sixteenth for the grant application review, which is what we talked about ostensibly.
But I would like to know if you would like to create a special, a, a, a special regular meeting? Cause at this point, you, you have, your twenty second meeting is taken up by the joint meeting, there's gonna be two places to talk about this, I guess. Um, and then you have this special meeting, so because of the fact that you're running on fewer meetings.
And we have fewer, so is there business that we have to attend to in July? Is there anything that, that we not, not show until, oh, we have you.
And the business mixer, if you wanna do that.
The mixer?
Do you guys wanna do this as Zoom?
I'm cool with Zoom.
Okay, so, uh, to recap, the twenty second is our regular meeting, but it's gonna be that joint meeting, so we're not gonna take our business there. The sixteenth, uh, the only thing that we can talk about is a grant review and it's not gonna be here, it's gonna be at the Field House. So a Zoom meeting, a special meeting to take place in the July twenty second meeting.
If you wanna add other business. If you wanna add other business to the sixteenth meeting, you can.
I don't want, no, I don't want to.
That's too much.
I don't want to.
There will still be, uh, public comments, that'll still be an option. Uh, that still has to be in there?
I think the applicants deserve full attention in their applications. Don't y'all think so?
Yes.
So a Zoom meeting and to take place of our regular meeting on the twenty-sixth, do you wanna do that? So we can talk about the business mixers and we can talk about Hispanic heritage?
Want to?
Uh, yeah.
Want is such a strong word.
Say that again?
Want is such a strong word.
Well, let me, okay, can we do this? Can, for the business mixers and Hispanic heritage, do you wanna break off in little subcommittees and work? And make some decisions and then come back in August? And then just update the commission? And anyone who wants to participate in that activity can be part of that subcommittee? Or would you rather have a, a second special meeting? Via Zoom?
Zooms.
Okay. Is there a day anybody wants to do? Does everybody, is Amanda, you okay with that?
I'm fine, but in full disclosure, I'm probably gonna be like you or in May. I'm gonna be taking a lot of July and I'll be away. So, um, may or may not have access to internet. If I can, I'll Zoom. If I don't-
If you don't, just say, went down.
There's only one internet service in Crete, Colorado, when it goes down, there's no, there's no internet.
How about July twenty-ninth?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at too.
Uh, July twenty-ninth?
Uh, Tuesday.
July twenty-ninth is good for me, if y'all wanna do it, by via Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna have three meetings in July.
Woo!
And that was July twenty-ninth?
Yes.
So six-thirty via Zoom?
Yes.
Hmm, man, we work hard!
Um, we're gonna have to pencil that.
Okay.
Can I get an alternate date?
Twenty-eighth?
Uh, the, the reason why is that's a Tuesday and it's a third Tuesday. It, it is the fifth Tuesday and Council may wanna have a meeting on that day. I'm not saying that they, they do, but they may.
You mean they have presents or what?
Yeah.
If I could get a, if I could get a backup date.
How about, how about the twenty-eighth?
I'm good with, I'm good with that whole week.
I'm good with twenty-eighth too.
And I'm totally rubbing off on Angela.
Twenty?
Twenty-eight. So is that cool for everybody, it's Monday the twenty-eighth?
That works.
What do you think, Dr. Perry?
I think it'll work.
Six-thirty Zoom, Monday the twenty-eighth. Uh-
You don't need a ride.
Don't, you don't. That, that's the second.
That's the second option.
Second option.
So the first option is the twenty-ninth. If City Council doesn't totally still our thunder, then we'll have it on the twenty-eighth.
Yes.
They're always boning it. Yes.
Oh, I have a birthday card for Sarah, I was gonna pass her around, it was supposed to be a secret, but, um-
Now it's on the record. Yes, Tim?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I Googled how do arts commissions, um, evaluate grants? And according to Google, uh, first there's a staff review to make sure that I's are dotted and T's are crossed.
We have that.
Okay, we've done that.
Okay.
There's another, uh, then evaluation or panel review.
We don't do that.
We don't do that. Panels composed of experts in the field, artists, educators, administrators, review applications.
We could do that.
Based on criteria, right, I'm just throwing this out as, this is Google that says that some would have-
Technically, you're off, you're off the agenda now.
Thank you, I know.
Okay.
No, no, I thought it was regarding-
Oh, it is, I'm sorry, my bad, you're, you're right, I'm sorry. I'm off.
Agenda item.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, uh, and then after the panel reviews it, they make recommendations to the commission and the commission votes on, or they, or they review the, the, the recommendation of a panel. And a panel would not have to have any kind of public meeting. A panel can meet in any way that they choose to sort of do the pre-work for the commission.
That's how Dallas does it.
Yeah, that, that would make sense, especially as we get more grants and things like that. But the, the work we're gonna be doing as a commission is what really a panel ought to be doing, I think, in the future, you know?
I think we can get there absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, at this point, you are acting as the panel because, uh, Council's making the final decision. Based on your recommendations that you sent.
Anything else on that topic? So the twenty-ninth, and if that doesn't work, the twenty-eighth, via Zoom and that's gonna be, take the place of our regular meeting, which is normally on the twenty-second. Hardest working commission in the city. Let's go ahead and move on to item fifteen, the cultural district discussion. I'm gonna stand up, 'cause I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a little game for us. Um, so we've been talking about this for about fifteen months. The city manager has offered a more comprehensive approach to, um, what the strategy would be. There's been a walking meeting, you had, uh, other City Council members talk about, uh, uh, other ways that we can think about the cultural district. So I'm gonna try to get us to a really quick, not a quick, but I'm gonna try to get us to a point where we can come to, to come to an agreement. So, we're gonna have to take some action on this so that the City Council knows what we did. I'm gonna be my own scribe because Sarah's always the scribe. This is not fair.
She just said a birthday.
I know. She's too old to be the scribe. I'm still young, okay? So what I would like to do, I'm gonna go touch on every single one of this. This is a complicated, diverse topic. What I would like for everybody in this commission is to say the one thing that they feel is most critical for the success of the cultural district. I know there's more, I know it's varied, I know it's tonal. It's okay, but I gotta, I gotta write, I gotta write something up here. So if you could say it in one, two or three words, what do you feel is gonna be most critical for the success of the cultural district?
You wanna do this now?
I'm watching the live feed and I'm realizing the camera doesn't point up here.
Okay. Thanks, man. Thank you! Okay, is everybody understand the instructions?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the vice chair and I'm gonna move all the way around. Mr. Vice Chair, and, and as brief as you can, but, but as succinct as you can, what do you feel is most important to the success of the cultural district?
Focused, consistent programming.
I'm gonna use one word. No, I'm gonna put them all, I'm sorry.
It's three, you're good.
Focused, consistent, program.
Inclusivity and a place for events and exhibits or whatever.
Places. Who's next? Mary Ann?
Um, expectations met.
I am never gonna ask you what your expectations are.
What?
I would never ask you what your expectations were. I, I can never beat them. Sarah?
Um, diversity, fun, freedom.
Freedom, nice. Spoken like an artist. Mr. Perry?
Please.
You're meant a few words, I like that. Amy?
Um, diversified collaboration in content and location.
Diversified collaboration in content-
And location.
And location. I actually remembered that, I went into credit, you just stole my credit, Angela. Sort of, I sort of thought about collaboration, but hold on.
Um, yeah. For the cultural district, I think there needs to be, um, transparency and communication. Trust the process.
Trust the process, I like that one. Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hamby, would you please read word for word the resolution that was passed in February? Uh, Arts Commission approved it, went to City Council, City Council approved it. Remember, most of us were at that meeting?
Yeah.
Talking about it, looking at it, places. And if you could read it while Mr. Hamby raises it for the record, please.
The resolution of the City Council, the city of Dunkinville, Texas approving the establishment of a cultural district in Dunkinville, Texas and the establishment of a steering committee and boundaries of the cultural district. Whereas the city of Dunkinville recognizes the importance of establishing a cultural district to enhance community engagement, promote economic development, encourage tourism and celebrate the arts and culture as essential components in the city's identity. And whereas this, the Texas Commission on the Arts provides a framework and recommendations for the establishment and successful operation of cultural districts within the state of Texas. And whereas, the City Council of Dunkinville acknowledges the need for a structured approach to develop and manage the process, the proposed cultural district, ensuring representation from a wide array of stakeholders, including city boards, commissions, staff, city council members, business representatives, developers, state representatives and community members. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the city of Dunkinville, Texas that section one, creation of the steering committee. The city of Dunkinville hereby establishes the cultural district steering committee to oversee the development and implementation of the cultural district in accordance with the structure recommended by the Texas Commission on the Arts. Section two, name and boundaries of the cultural district. The cultural district shall be named the Armstrong Park Cultural District. The boundaries of the cultural district shall encompass, as depicted in exhibit A, which is attached here too and incorporated here in with consideration for future expansion as opportunities arise and as deemed appropriate by the steering committee and the Dunkinville City Council. Section three, membership and appointments. The steering committee shall consist of representatives from city boards and commissions, city staff, members of the city council, local businesses, property developers, state representatives and community members. The city council shall appoint a chair. The chair shall oversee the organization of subcommittees and coordinate the work of the steering committee. Section four, subcommittee responsibilities. The steering committee shall establish subcommittees as recommended by the Texas State, Texas Commission on the Arts to focus on key areas of cultural district development. Organization committee for governor, governance and structural planning. Marketing committee to promote and raise awareness of the cultural district. Cultural resources committee to identify and enhance existing cultural assets. Design committee to plan and improve the physical and visual elements of the district. Business development committee to foster partnerships and support economic growth within the district. An events committee shall also be created under the marketing committee to organize cultural events and activities. Section five, implementation and reporting. The chair, in collaboration with the steering committee, shall develop a detailed structure and timeline for the cultural district's establishment. The steering committee shall provide a reg- shall provide regular updates and recommendations to the city council on the progress of the cultural district development. Section six, dissolution of, dissolution of the steering committee. The steering committee shall remain in place until one of the following occurs. The designation of the Armstrong Park Cultural District by the Texas Commission on the Arts is achieved. The city council decides to dissolve the steering committee at its discretion. Upon the conclusion of its work, the steering committee may make formal recommendations to the city council for the establishment of a permanent cultural district management entity or other organizations to continue the work of managing, sustaining and growing the cultural district. Section seven, community engagement. The steering committee shall prioritize inclusive community engagement, ensuring the cultural district reflects the diverse voices and needs of the Dunkinville community.
Okay, and so, and remember the, the steering committee, that format is what the Texas Commission for the Arts recommends as a cultural district management entity. So, Mr. Vice Chair, is there anything in this resolution that would prevent focused, consistent program? Dr. Perry, is there anything in the language of this resolution that would prevent inclusivity and places?
On, I know cultural resources committee, it says cultural assets. I just wanna make sure that includes artists as assets.
That's a good question. The, the Texas Commission for the Arts, you guys can look it up, is a, a cultural asset. Are people, places and events? So it actually includes people. That's a good question. Is there anything in the language of this resolution that would prevent inclusivity and places? Um, Mary Ann, is there anything in the resolution that would prevent your expectations from being met?
And the citizens.
And the citizens?
Yeah, maybe, no.
Okay. Sarah, is anything in the language of the resolution that would prevent diversity, fun and freedom? Tim, is there anything in the resolution that would prevent place? Amy, is there anything in the resolution that would prevent diversified collaboration in content and location?
Not, uh, uh, no, I think the jury's, I think with that, that line there with, uh, consideration for future expansion and its opportunities arise, I have some concerns now that I've looked at more information when we did that walk-in tour. And that is just a concern about the location and making sure that we have all the opportunities available that we need.
But would the, but the, would the resolution prevent that?
As long as that, that is in there and it's, yeah, it's, it's a gray area, but yes, I'm fine with it.
Angela, is there anything in the resolution that would prevent transparency, communication, trust the process?
No.
Um, the great thing about the, the steering committee is that more people get, get to be involved. So, what City Council wants to know is what the Arts Comma, what the Arts Commission feels about this resolution. So we need to take some action. Um, there needs to be a motion to whether we ask that this goes back to City Council as is or with any changes or with any caveats. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
So, would you say the motion for the record?
I move to return this to City Council as is.
Is there a second on-
I second that motion.
Sarah? All in favor of the motion, which is to send the resolution back to City Council as is, return it? Hold on, I'm sorry.
Can you go second?
Yes.
Um, this is open for-
You're right.
You, you can ask for a discussion first.
Absolutely, I should.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Why are we voting to send the resolution back to City Council? Wouldn't we send it to City Council and voted on it?
So when I was reading, when I was watching the, 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 the video from, that you're walking tour, the mayor asked the Arts Commission to go back and review the resolution with the boundaries and the names.
Okay.
So the best way that I know how to do that with the, what you just saw with the city, with the city manager brought, is, is there anything in the resolution that would prevent any of those changes? So, we have, we've had two City Council members, uh, who, who have recommended the way that they think that it should look.
Okay.
Um, so, and then we've talked about it, uh, Ms. Jackson's talked about it. There's gonna be other people in the community who are gonna see the way this can work. There's gonna be some businesses and, and some community volunteers and artists. The resolution needs to be flexible enough that everybody in the community can have a voice and it can change and it can adapt. And the best way that I know to make sure that the City Council knows that we've taken due diligence, because we've talked about it for fifteen months and it's a complicated, it's a very complicated program. And, and my hope is when the steering committee is established, there'll be lots of opportunities to invite folks from the Texas Commission for the Arts, to invite people who've created cultural district, to invite, uh, people from philanthropy who like to give to cultural districts. This is gonna have to belong to everybody. And I think when the steering committee gets created, then all those triggers can be pulled.
Okay.
Just wondering. Okay, any other questions?
I'm glad that it says with consideration for future expansion, you know, 'cause I'm just never in favor of just the boundary.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's, I, I'm with you, Anne, I mean, that's my concern. I think that with, I don't know if it's as succinct as I want it to be or it's, um-
Do you recall what, hey, Alex, can you put up the presentation that I gave to Arts Commission? And, and I'm interrupting, 'cause I want you to read what was presented to the, the, to the City Council and the Arts Commission. And I think it may help if, the succinctness. 'Cause recall, Tim and I were going to blows on the walkability. He literally let the air out of my tires one time. It's on the record, it must be true. Um, this is.
Just not sure if this is.
Oh, no, it's the other one. So, recall what I did, there is a presentation with the Texas Commission for the Arts, is are you ready for apply? Recall that I showed the commission and the city council that presentation. And with it, remember the green, the green, the yellow, the red? It was, it was our answer to those things. Recall what I said was the green, we got it, yellow, we almost have it, red is something we have to lean into, but the community is gonna benefit. The community is gonna benefit us le- leaning in things that we don't have. And so I want to, and this was shown so long ago, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, I'm seeing it right there. And so I heard the conversations about when the mayor asked, did you see the application? What you saw was the first tool in the toolbox, it was are you ready to apply? And recall, I put the big red two twenty-two-seven, I said it's gonna take two or three years to, to really lean into this, even before we can talk about applying? And then I said, because the presentate, because the application is complicated. We talked about videos, video is gonna be a big part of this, we talked about having these things to demonstrate in that application. And then showed everybody where to look to find the application. Okay, so this, I'm gonna go in this really, really quickly because this always goes back to, because here's the thing, we do have cultural assets all over town. The langu- and it's part of this, it's part of the process, but what we're doing is we're creating a place. These are, this is, this is directly from the Texas Commission for the Arts website, you saw this before. Are you ready for district designation when? This is when everybody voted for us. There's strong political support, we got that, district planning efforts reflect the diversity of your community, we almost got that. So these are those things we talked about. What is cultural tourism? One of the reasons I go back to the park, right here. These multicultural and multi-generation visitors make their travel choices related to performance, artistic activity, there's architectural history. Histor- we actually do have some history, I put that in red. I grew up in Dunkinville, this is my hometown, I'm a hometown boy. When I was an eighty-two little kid, we had zero money to do anything. Every Fourth of July, we went to Armstrong Park, it would look much different than back in nineteen. It was way, way different then. I used to stand there in the heat, waiting for the parade and the people to throw candy to me. I didn't have money for candies again, this was fun for me, they threw the candy, I'm like, God, I'm running, mom, dad, I got the candy. I got to take my nephew, I don't have any kids. I'm fitting something, I got to take my nephew back and do the exact same thing I did, just bigger. That is multi-generational visitors, I'm not the only one who grew up in Dunkinville, I know we're all doing the same things with our kids. So when you talk about some of these things, understand. The vision is there, the vision is important. But what we have is a fifty-plus year old park where literally everything in this town happened. It belongs to the people, every single penny that we raised, every single penny that happened goes back to the park for the people. And what we call the cultural corridors and what the city manager talked about when he talked about having the overlays. That belongs to the businesses, they can lean and say, I want a part of this. Also keep in mind, we help businesses make money, what does a downtown Dunkinville need, businesses need to know how they're gonna make money. How you know you're gonna how to make money? Well, if the arts, remember, this is me, I don't believe that the arts are means to an end. I believe we have to do this for artists, we have thirty-one dead buildings in Dunkinville. For, in order for a, for a, for a entrepreneur to come in and buy a building, put his business in there, put his money and make it. We're gonna have to show him how he's gonna make money, right? So if we have a boom in cultural district that's free for the whole community and we're tracking those metrics and we know every time there's gonna be jazz. But if we're gonna go to the theater and buy a ticket and then they're gonna go to the store next door and buy, buy some, some Mexican food and margaritas. But those things are tracked with economic development, so how do you set the district boundaries, we're talking about boundaries? Contiguous area that is walkable, that's not me y'all, that's the Texas Commission for the Arts. I'm glad you walked because one of the important things is. You see include lots of arts activity. That's happening in the park for fifty-plus years, we have an amazing community theater, there's gonna be a dot to connect, but remember, this is about creating a place. Not connecting dots, we'll get there and there's lots of ways, Amy's already told us how we're all gonna work together. We're coming to her, how can we work together? Artistic resources should play a vital role in the livability and economic development of the city, the city manager just showed us the twenty-five, twenty-forty. It's all about the arts. The district must be actively engaged in promotions, honestly, when this was approved, there should have been press releases, there should have been all kinds of fun things to announce it. But we're keeping it silent, we should be talking about it, include restaurants, venues and hotels and other amenities, they're not next to, they're not next to the park, I get that. Those are big reds, but we're gonna figure it out, you know when we've kind of figured this stuff out? The community benefits, so I wanted to talk about it because it keeps going back to the boundaries and walkability. This is from the Texas Commission for the Arts, the built environment is friendly for people living, shopping, visiting and spending time. Characteristics include, this is the exact same language, this is how we voted on, we did this. The built environment has a center, a main street and a public square, it's a park. Enough people for business and activity to flourish, it's where everybody in the city goes. Mixed income and mixed use with affordable housing next door, it's getting there and it's getting better there. Parks and public spaces to gather and play, designed for pedestrian use. Look, there's a sidewalk, it goes all the way around, if I'm in a wheelchair, my, my eighty-two-year-old mother, who's mobility impaired, we've done this. My mother and I walk the park. It's not convenient for her to walk to the theater. So I just wanna make that point clear, it's not walkable for everyone. The other part of it is when you leave the park, you know you left the park, so it's important to recognize, it's a sense of place. Closest schools and workplaces, center is now going to be a fine arts academy. I had a conversation with Paul Doucet, he's a director of fine arts with the D I S D, told him what we're doing here at the arts commission. You're right next door, how do we fit the school into what we're doing? He says, state me an email, could we talk about the disconnect with that, he said you have a new friend at the I S D. Streets designed for bicyclists, pedestrians, people with disabilities and public transportation, public transit, I feel like there's something for start transit here. There's something for everybody to dig in. We don't know where this is gonna go, we talked about it going towards Wheaton Plaza, remember when it looked like Nebraska? And it was going down to Wheaton Plaza and then Tim and I were beating each other up about it. We have to start somewhere, council member Matt Burnett said, put our flag in the sand and move forward with it. So, when the, when the steering committee comes together, they can decide how it's gonna grow. Based on a natural flow of activity, where does the money go, where do the resources go, where does the energy go? Do we determine where people wanna go and experience arts or do we let the artists decide, so?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, I'm like in totally embracing your passion, so I'm not, I'm.
I know you're not. But the borders have always been.
Um, I worry about the business, you know, the, 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 enough people for business and activity to flourish. And I don't see anywhere for business to grow in Armstrong Park, so I want us to be able to do, um, everything that we're supposed to be able to do. So, you know me, I got eyes for crossies, I mean, that's one of the theaters that are out so long, and so I worry about that, I also worry. Um, I didn't know, I don't, if it's, I don't know if it's kosher to ask Councilman Gooden to speak, it's because it's in this district.
We would, we would have to do a rule. To suspend the, we had to do a vote, suspend the rules, vote on it and then he can speak.
Okay, well, I'm, and I don't, I don't know the rules, so I'm, I was, I, I, I can't.
And let me.
He was part of that walking tour that day and I know Angela was there and we just, we were all, we got so excited. About the business opportunities and the cultural district and all of the things that you've put in place. So, it, I'm not being, you know, the naysayer, I'm trying to make sure that we have all of the opportunities that we need to flourish. So there you have it, so.
So, one of the things, and, and I, I'll get you, Tim, it's about the resolution. And then this steering committee is everything about the business and economic development. So, we had used an analogy, so, let's say Dairy Queen is across the street. Would you extend the district to Dairy Queen when there's some businesses that really don't contribute to the livability? And have to take them in, but it's Dairy Queen, or would you make sure that the Armstrong Park is popping? Economic development and city staff can do the overlays and, and incentives, this is, hey. Dairy Queen, if you can do X Y Z, you can get X Y Z. And then you can find a benefit from the activity, so, then if they do it, they do it, if they don't, they don't. And here's the other part, let's say that we do all this and we don't get a successful application. The work we're doing for the community, this isn't about an application necessarily, it's about community building. And I think that's something where we get lost, I used to have a boss who would say, let's not major in the minors. And that's what I worry about, because we have a park fifty-plus years, it has so much to offer. And the things that it doesn't offer gives us an opportunity to lean in the areas where I can. So, so Amy and I are, Amy and I are cut from the same thread. We build creative businesses, when she's not doing the theater, she doesn't know the creative business. And we know the tenuous place that creativity does to make money. My experience is, you let artists be artists, they will find the ways to make it work. Tim?
Um, I, I was just thinking that we have a, you know, we had a motion and a second and this was part of discussion, you got a PowerPoint in your discussion.
From, from October. This is from October, you voted on this. You're gonna let Eric my tires, aren't you?
I think, yeah, I think that basically, you know, if we're getting back to what the vote is, I, I think that. This resolution encompasses all that you've just talked about and, and I think it gives. The steering committee ample room to steer whatever direction they wanna go in, so yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Is there any more discussion on it?
No, I, no, I just had a comment that I, when we first voted on this and when you did your presentation. One of the things that I keyed in on and you have it in section six, we can grow the cultural district. That's what I keyed in, the cultural district can grow, we just needed that basic starting.
I was, I was at a, at this, we'll get to the phone, this is just for, for insight. I was at a gallery showing in Dallas, uh, the weekend before last and one of the people who'd created, we have three cultural districts in Dallas County. She created two of them, the first thing she said to me and she saw me and she said, how's your cultural district coming? I love this, because you know who the lady is, you know her. And I said, it's going fantastic, it's going fantastic, the city's behind it, the community's behind it, we're looking for ways to make it grow. And she said, will you do that in phases? And then the conversation was over. So, it's, it's, so if, if there's, is there any more discussion on this?
Well, I will vote for it, but I, I do wish it weren't named the Armstrong Park and I was wondering, it was Armstrong, so I just looked it up, you know, Robert Lee Armstrong. I didn't know anything about him, he's buried at Little Bethel Memorial Park. Uh, but any rate, so I, it's a name thing.
I gasped.
It's like, okay, I, I don't get the circum- you know, the circumstrong area and, and the name. But I will still vote for the rest of it.
And, so here's a, here's a conversation about the name, we've been treating this as a name change, but no one in the resolution does it say we're changing the name of the park. So theoretically, what we've done is we've created a cultural district within Armstrong Park. When it grows, and I fully expect it to grow, the name can change, but right now, history's part of this. And we can call it the Ampera Cultural District. All right.
To be clear, if I could just, since we're still doing our discussion, my concern was that the green, it was that one that you had where it was the bottom line, it was the green. We talked about, you had a, there was a red there, include restaurants, venues, hotels and other amenities, and I don't see how we can. Honestly say that in Armstrong Park, so that was my concern, that's what I wanted, everyone to understand the root of my. Dotting the i's and crossing the t's and where my concern lies, because I want us to be approved, I want it to, to, I want us to get that designation. And I have some serious concerns that, um, and, and that's why I worry about that, yes, there's consideration for future expansion. But it, it's when we, we define it so clearly and then we just put that consider- consideration, I'm sorry, former English teacher here. The consideration is not necessarily as specific as I might want it to be, and I just worry about that bottom line because I really want us to be able to be approved. For that designation and I don't want it to be a problem going forward.
What if you looked at it this way, is it helpful if I said? We, this may be our Achilles' heel, this may be the thing that kills the state designation. But how cool would it be for the com- community if we tried like heck to make it work? And this is an exercise in, this is a reason to try something new. So, I guess the way that I always look at it, any, to me, the reds, when we first had this conversation in October, I said, it's, it's what we're gonna lean into. And the community will benefit from us leaning into it.
But I was in a, in October, I kept wanting them to improve the sidewalks, so I don't really drifted too far away from.
Oh, so there are grants, there, so the city manager told us about, there are gonna be grants that can fix the sidewalks that'll be available to the city in twenty-twenty-eight. So we have a lot.
But that was what I was talking about then, is I really did want it to be larger, we talked about the walkability and the sidewalks and that kind of thing, so, um. So that, so that everybody understands I'm not flipping, I just want it to be, and I, and I think, and not necessarily in the theater, as I was clear then, the theater's been fine for thirty-eight years without a designation. But the whole main station area with that cool courtyard and that vibe, outdoor music and the things that could go on there. What I just wanna make sure is that we don't, um, that we leave enough opportunity and I think the word consideration is the, it just wasn't specific enough for me. But, um, so, but that's it, I've said what I have to say.
All right, and it's good stuff too. That's good, Amy and I have been friends for eighteen years, this is how we talk, if we drink wine, we cuss at each other. Uh, any other conversation on this? So I'd like to call for a vote, the, the, the motion was to prove the resolution as is. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Oppose? One opposed? Okay, let's move on to. Item sixteen, block party comprehensive plan meeting, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, at the Dunkinville Field House. That is normally our meeting and there's a flyer. Um, is, council member Gooden, you chair this committee, is that?
I'm chair, um, I'm a member of council that is on it.
Do you wanna speak on this item?
So, um, this particular night, we will introduce the draft. Of the comprehensive plan twenty-forty, as the city manager said tonight. And we are asking that all of the commissions who are present to also be there to give their input on reading it. So, you would need to review, um, the city manager said he would provide you a link and I'm sure that will probably come through Alex. Once you get the link, we ask that you seriously give time to reading through it. This is not front and back, this is just one-sided print, so please take the time to read through it, make notes, bring your ideas. Anything that you, um, see in it that you would like to have added or considered by council, please provide. Um, I can't stress enough, just be prepared to talk about it because this is. How we see ourselves growing, uh, by twenty-forty and we always hear citizens want this, citizens want that. And we try to incorporate as much of that as we could, um, in our meetings and this draft. So if there's anything that we might have overlooked, we need to hear about that, so this is your opportunity to do so.
What will the, uh, meeting on the twenty-second be like, what would the structure be?
Um, I have it in my planner as a block party, um, that's how it's presented to us as a block party. Um, and citizens are able to come out and contribute as well, so it's kind of be something like a party, but at the same time discussing. And introducing this to the public.
Okay, so it's not a.
My understanding.
It's not really a meeting meeting.
I don't know, do you have any additional information I'll have?
I, I, I've heard it's a meeting meeting, but it's a meeting meeting with.
Special hats.
Celebration. Celebratory meeting, that's a way of putting it.
There, there will be, it's open to the public, it is, there will be prizes, there will be snacks, there will be. a lot of people there.
There'll be candy.
Fish candy.
Okay. Please try to make it, I think, I think it's important for us to be there. Uh, any other conversation? Businesses adjourned, it's eight fifty-nine P M.